Welcome, everyone. Tonight, we're having a work session on our emergency safety response systems and programs and processes. So, welcome to this evening's city council work session. I think that we'll have people identify themselves. We'll start with, let's start with Ward Eight.
Yeah.
Yeah, start with Ward Eight and go around.
Good evening. My name is Dan Clemm. I represent Ward Eight, which is mostly the residential part of West Salem.
Good evening. I'm Ward Larnar. I represent Ward Seven, South Salem.
I'm Bruce Rogers. I represent Ward Six in the one of northeast central Salem.
Diana Dickey, I represent Ward Five in the northeast Salem.
Chris Blossom, Ward Four in the real South Salem. All the way at the end.
And Brad Nienke representing Ward Three, which is the southeast and way southeast Salem as well, in two separate little clumps.
I'm Laura Tesler. I represent Ward Two.
Chuck Bennett. I represent Ward One, that's central Salem and the more business area of West Salem.
Thank you. And I'm Mayor Anna Peterson, and I am so honored to represent the whole city. All right, we have our fire chief. Chief Neblock is here with us this evening, and I believe, are you going to lead off?
I'm going to give you a very brief introduction and then introduce Deputy Chief Jimmy Stewart, who is going to give you the bulk of the presentation. And we've got about 25 minutes of extremely exciting information to share with you.
Excellent.
And we would ask, if possible, we leave all the rest of the time at the end for your questions, wherever you want to go with that.
Okay.
And we're really going to just give you a snapshot of what we do as emergency managers here in the city. And the one thing that I think is probably one of the most important things that I've experienced here is that the fact that we really do have cooperation across a wide variety of departments, public works, police, and fire, but also administrative services and purchasing. And these folks have come out and gotten trained to higher levels, and we have three completely staffed EOC teams that meet all the federal standards for training. And that's a rare thing in cities. Often, it's, you know, nobody wants to think about emergency management because that stuff's never going to happen. So, you know, the city manager has really supported the training efforts and the preparation efforts for us to be better prepared when those things do occur. And we have opened the EOC. Chief Stewart will talk about several times we've opened the EOC in the most recent past. We don't open it often, and that's a good thing, but we do need to be ready to do that and prepared to do that. And so, with that, I'm going to introduce Deputy Chief Jimmy Stewart, who oversees the emergency management portion of the fire department and for the city.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Deputy Chief, pleasure to have you with us tonight. We don't often get to actually have you talk with us, so, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Again, Jim Stewart, Deputy Chief of Fire and Life Safety. Our division in the fire department is the Fire Marshal's Office and Emergency Management. Although we're small in numbers, we actually have a big impact across the community, both from the fire prevention investigation side and emergency management. So, I'm excited to be here tonight to give a brief overview of the emergency management program of the city of Salem. And I got to start by saying that this is truly a team effort in the city of Salem. It's not just a fire department activity by any means. We have representation and emergency management committee from across all the departments and divisions of the city, and actually, great collaboration with our community partners as well. I also want to take a moment to recognize Roger Stevenson. I believe most of you are very familiar with Roger. He's been with us for 16 years. He's our emergency manager. He's well-respected, not only across the city and the counties around us, but across the state, and has connections at the federal level as well. So, he really is the heart and soul of our emergency management program, and he's been serving for quite a long time. Tonight, in about 25 minutes or so, I'd like to go over these main bullet points that we have here. We'll talk a little bit about the concepts of emergency management, and then really focus and drill down into what makes that successful, and that's planning, training, and exercising of our teams to make sure that they're ready. And we'll talk a little bit about response and incident command. There'll be some terminology that you'll hear me use that leads into our Emergency Operations Center. And Emergency Operations Center, as the chief mentioned, is not something that we open every day or every week. In fact, it's only every few years that the emergencies and disasters in the community rise to that level that we actually open that. But we do train and plan and prepare for that on a monthly basis. We'll talk a little bit more about preparedness, and then we'll finish up with successes and future needs of our program. Some of these terms that are on the board may be familiar with you. Our Emergency Management Plan, acronym SEMP, is a very large book, binder. It covers our plan. It's actually required by state statute and city ordinance that we have this plan. We give a lot of our information and work hand-in-hand with Oregon Emergency Management Agency of the state. And that's where we receive a lot of our funding, is through the EMPG, which is Emergency Management Program Grant. About half of our program is funded from that opportunity. NIMS is the National Incident Management System, and it goes hand-in-hand with ICS and Command System, which leads into EOC. And you'll hear me use the term CERT, which many of you are familiar with. It's Community Emergency Response Team. This may be a new graphic or a new concept to some of you, but for many of you, it's probably familiar. This is Emergency Management Cycle. This is what we see on a national level, on a state level, county, city, and even down to individual homeowners and businesses, when there's an emergency or some sort of a disaster. It follows this management cycle. Mitigation, prevention, doing things ahead of time to make sure that when something happens, the effects of that are minimized, preventing them from happening. And then going into preparedness, that's where we'll focus a lot tonight, is on planning and training and exercise. We want to be prepared to respond because we do want to make a difference. We want to protect life, property, and the environment. We do that through the response. And as soon as possible, start the recovery process. And recovery is not only about getting it back to, things back to how they were, but also getting them better than they were before. And that leads back into mitigation. If you look at this picture, to describe this, a lot of people may say, this looks like there's a disaster that's going on, there's a major emergency that's going on here. But by and large, Police Department, Fire Department, Public Works Department, we're in the response business. And day in, day out, round the clock, your departments respond to all sorts of emergencies, whether it be traffic crashes, structure fires. Pictures up here that indicate a gas leak that was downtown not very long ago, which was a major event for us. We work hand-in-hand with the Police Department, Public Works, and all the departments in the city. I just want to underscore that at this level, this doesn't rise to the occasion of the Emergency Operations Center or bringing in any kind of overhead staff. The employees are trained. This is their day-to-day activity that they do. Even sometimes, as these pictures indicate here, there are some incidents that we respond to that take even additional training and expertise, whether it be hazmat, confined space rescue, or urban search and rescue. So, again, working across the different departments in the city, we plan for those events, we train on those, and we have exercises. But again, individually, they don't rise to the occasion of the Emergency Operations Center. When we start looking at the actual preparedness part of the emergency management cycle, the first one that we want to focus in is planning. And like any good operation, you need to have a good plan. Key plans that we have in emergency management begin with our Emergency Management Plan. This plan is written and required to be revised every, reviewed and revised every five years. We're just finishing a very comprehensive renewal review of this, and we'll be bringing this to council probably within the next four to eight weeks as a matter of information for council. We also have the National, our Natural Hazard Mitigations Plan. That, again, is also a five-year plan. It's focused specifically with our community. A five-year plan, our committee meets twice a year to review that plan, and there's a graphic, if you look down here, that shows, just one small excerpt from that plan. What we do in the Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan is take a look at the risk that face the community, how vulnerable we are to those, and the probability of those, and then we set goals, both short-term and long-term goals, to address those. You can see on this graphic that earthquake is a low frequency. Thankfully for us, it's very, very high vulnerability and probability of a very major earthquake in the Pacific Northwest is being forecast. We also have continuity operations plans, and even all the way down into facility evacuations plans, such as City Hall. We're talking about preparedness. The first key with that was planning. The second part of that is training, and this is an example of training that was going on in our EOC just about a month ago. We have training opportunities that are online. In fact, we have hundreds and hundreds of employees in the city of Salem that have taken online training in Incident Command, National Incident Management System, both that ICS and NIMS. And then we also have classroom instruction for the upper levels of management in the EOC. About a year and a half or two years ago, Roger was able to travel back and attend a FEMA Train the Trainer class, and so now he's certified to be able to teach these upper division classes here locally. They're known as ICS 300 and 400 classes. They're anywhere from three to five days in length, and that was sometimes a challenge for not only our local staff to attend, but also our community partners. So, we're able to deliver that training. Roger delivers that twice a year here at our EOC, cuts down on travel expenses, but better than that, it allows our local responders that will be in the EOC to work actually in the EOC with the tools they'll have, with the community partners that they have. So, when we do open the EOC, it creates for a better environment. The final part of preparedness is exercises. Many of you may remember the Vigilant Guard exercise that was in May of 2012. This was a simulated natural disaster where two tornadoes touched down in the city of Salem. It was a major, major event, major exercise to put on, and we, a lot of planning went into this, but it was initiated with a 911 call, simulated emergency message. Emergency responders from Salem Fire Department were dispatched to this area, immediately went into a different mode than they normally were to try and handle one or two emergencies, but really had to triage the entire scene, and they very quickly ramped up, called in additional overhead, additional chief officers. We had discussions with the chief, and like we would normally open the EOC, that then goes to the city manager's office, where the determination was to open the EOC. In this exercise, it was a multi-day, multi-jurisdictional exercise. We worked it through the first operational period, which was about eight to 12 hours, and then transitioned it to a team that came in, a state team that would come in to manage this incident. And the reason that's so important is because not only does this event overtax the response capability of our community, but also it's region-wide as it goes. Another very large-scale exercise we had was called Operation Cooperation. Many of you may remember that. It's a few years back. But it simulated a terrorist action activity in a public building with a bus explosion, with a bus bomb. So, again, lots of multi-agency coordination that went into this across the board. As we deal through the process, as you remember that the cycle of emergency management, we end up in the recovery and then in mitigation. So, a good example of mitigation for this exercise was enhanced security at this building to prevent the wide-range destruction that could occur. When we deal with response, as I mentioned in one of the earlier slides, the Police Department, Fire Department, Public Works, we're in the business of meeting the needs of the community, both routinely and emergencies that they encounter. Sometimes, that may be a single resource response, but many times, it gets escalated into multi-units, as are depicted here, and working both with Police Department, Fire Department, and Public Works Department. We coordinate those responses, and as I mentioned, if that event gets too big, where it taxes the resource capacity of a department, or we have multiple departments that are engaged, that's where we have some considerations to open the EOC. The EOC is Emergency Operations Center, and sometimes, we could open that just on a limited basis if we needed to, or we could open it completely and bring all of our partners and all of our teams in. The chief mentioned briefly catastrophic responses. I just want to kind of underscore that, that we are planned and prepared with our EOC teams and our emergency responders, but a 9.0 Cascadia-style earthquake, the one that you probably have read a lot about in the news, is going to have a major impact, not only on our community, but across the region. And in that mode, at least from the fire department's standpoint, our crew's initial actions are going to be one of trying to get a handle on what has actually happened in the community, trying to establish the critical infrastructures and facilities that we need to focus our attention on. And we may not be able to help everybody that's involved in it, much like a mass casualty accident on a freeway involving a lot of people, where we have to triage those patients. The same thing would happen in the community. The Incident Command System and the National Incident Management System have been around for decades in our business. We use them from everything, from a single fire engine response to a car fire, all the way up to the exercise we had with the tornadoes that were in town. It's a nationwide program of training that's involved when that begins at the entry level all the way through the advanced and management level. The nice thing about that is it's standardized, not just across our region, but across our country, uses standard terminology, and it can be scaled to any event that you want to use it to. The other thing that's very important in this is the span and control that we see, that we see not only at an emergency scene like this, with a battalion chief and the engine companies, but also in the EOC. So, as I mentioned, if we get an escalated response where we're starting to involve multiple departments in the city, many times, the incident commander will have representatives from those different departments in that command post. Sometimes, we'll have a unified command as well that wouldn't warrant opening the EOC. They will handle it right at the scene, but we want to make sure that there is one person in charge with that or a unified command to make those decisions. There are times that the size of the emergency and the scope of that actually gets to the point that we would need to open the EOC. And as I mentioned, many times, we get that information from either Roger, who's awake in the middle of the night, keeping an eye on the weather that's going on, or it may come from Public Works with the amount of road closures. In the case of 2012, we had the quick approaching flood. Roger's phone call to me, then I called the chief. We made some discussions with the chief, then worked with the city manager's office, and a decision made to open the EOC was made. We can use as much of the EOC and as much of this framework as we need. You can see that we're starting to hand out some of these assignments to make sure that the span and control is covered. One important part of this organizational chart is this Public Information Officer, and this is where it becomes very critical in our business, that we make sure that we speak with a unified voice, that we have one message, we have a very clear message to our customers. That same process will travel along, no matter how big the system gets. You can see, we can add to this organizational chart. We can bring in more people to this organizational chart because we're dealing with the response category right now, but we want to move from response to recovery, and so there's a lot of work that takes place when it comes to damage assessment, making sure we have good records that then would go into our mitigation plan later. These, if I back up one slide, these are positions in an organizational chart, but I wanted to show you a graphic that's actually what our EOC team looks like. And so, it's just not, our team just isn't, positions that we don't have people assigned to. But over here on the left of the screen, you can see the command positions, and we have the command staff, and then the general staff that's down here. So, all of those positions that were on the organizational chart are laid out here. We have three teams in the city of Salem, nearly 100 people that are trained at the advanced ICS level. This is a dynamic list, and it's always changing as people move, so it's one of the reasons that we do have Roger teaching the advanced-level classes. People from these teams also attend, and many of them attend our monthly Emergency Management Committee meetings, along with outside partners that we have. But I want to transition from this list of names to show you what the EOC actually looks like. And so, these are our staff. This is our EOC. This is in January of 2011. It was an EOC exercise, determined to take that extra step of preparedness. And we talked about planning, we talked about training, and then we talked about exercises. This was an exercise of a winter storm warning. It was January of 2011, which is the third Thursday of the month. That's the schedule for our meeting. You notice, everybody's got their assignments. It was a Public Works-led event, and the briefings are taking place. I want to fast-forward one year exactly. At the third Thursday of January 2012, we're back in the EOC, but this was actually the flood, so it was a bit uncanny that that was exactly one year to the date. And it was actually on the day that we have our Emergency Management Committee meeting, so everybody was already headed that way. Not everybody, but we did have a lot of people that had that on their calendar for that warning. So, again, the nice thing about this, I think the thing that this exemplifies is the planning and the training, the exercise allow us to be really seamless when we do have to enact the EOC. You can see from these other pictures that it's a very, very busy place, a lot of technical expertise in there, a lot of coordination between the different general staff people that are in there, a lot of technical knowledge. We could get across-the-board representation from the city, not only technical staff, but people that are GIS, that are producing the maps and the charts and the information that people need in the field. Also, during the flood of January 2012, we had an early decision to open a call center, and that was a very good decision, because during the flood, we got a lot of calls that started to inundate the emergency dispatch center. We were able to open a call center that were staffed by employees initially, and then we were able to transition that to our CERT teams. And so, we got great support from the CERT team. We were able to run this through the night. We actually had three, I believe, three operational periods with the flood, and that was a very good assistance that we had from the CERT team. As we talk about CERT, many of you are very familiar with this. The mission of CERT is to promote emergency preparedness and training in our community. And we have slides here of people that are very, very well-engaged in this. They do a lot in their community to spread the message, to get people prepared to take actions on themselves. They also receive training on how to handle minor emergencies. And the bottom two slides are examples of what we call caches. There are CERT caches that are distributed across the community. I believe we have 13, Roger, 13 permanent caches, and then one mobile cache that we can move around. What these caches are designed to do is not to feed and provide water to the community. These are caches that are for the emergent volunteers that will come out. The CERT teams will rally at these points, and we have communications equipment, checklist, and ability to do search and to really assess the communities, the areas that they're in. So, that's a good part of our emergency response plan. Another thing I wanted to highlight, I know it's very difficult to see the small letters on here, but this is a screenshot of some technology that we've had in the city of Salem for nearly five years now. It rolled out, I believe, in 2010, and it's called SAFE, and that's an acronym for Situational Awareness Framework for Events. And what this does is it takes data feeds from all across the city and even outside the city, puts it into one place that we can use in the EOC by the people that need to make decisions. I just took a screenshot from our community last week. These blue dots are 911 police calls. These red dots are 911 fire calls. There's also automatic vehicle locators in here, emergency vehicle locations. It's very valuable for the Incident Command Staff in the EOC. We have a section in there that uses live maps, and so we can populate this map with everything from emergency road closures to planned road closures. That actually helps that EOC make those decisions in the field, for the people in the field. We talked a little bit about the Public Information Officer earlier, and Chief Neblock talked about this briefly. That's key in the emergency response arena, to make sure that we're giving the right information to the people as quickly as possible. Now, sometimes, it does take a while to get the right information, but we want to make sure we give one message, and it's the correct message for the public and for other people that need that information. When we have a major event in the community, a catastrophic EOC event, and the EOC is open, we also can use what's called the Joint Information System, and I'll open a Joint Information Center. We have a primary Joint Information Center in the city, which is at CCTV, as well as a backup that's located at Chomecketa Community College. These Joint Information Centers are like the EOC that we have cached equipment that's ready to go for the people to be able to work with. And it's critical because the decisions that need to be made in the EOC are communicated and approved from the incident commander through the Joint Information Center, and then that information then is put out to the public. This is a critical step in there because, especially in the world of technology now and social media, social media can be a very good tool for us to get the message out, but it can also work counterproductive if the wrong message gets out there across the community. When it comes to the mayor and city council roles, if you remember that organizational chart that I had there, we have the EOC that's up and running, making those operational-type decisions. From the mayor and city council, we'll be looking for policy guidance, because there will be policy decisions that do need to be made. There are times that emergency funding requests may need to be made. And a key part here is the assistance from mayor and council to maintain that consistent communication. I know the people in the community are going to be turning to you because they do day in and day out to get information. This would be critical, the information that we'll put out. We want to make sure that that's available, that you have the correct information. Other areas of preparedness that we actually have in place every year in the city of Salem are listed on the screen here. We live in Salem, where it rains a lot, and we anticipate that we're going to have some low-level flooding every year. We have sandbag locations that are predetermined every year, at least 12 of them, and sometimes we'll open more. Through Public Works, we'll open the sandbag locations that provides the sand. We have a stockpile of approximately 80,000 sandbags that are also in those places that are available for people to come and to get. We can also open up more of those if they need dictates. Other things that we have or stockpiled are some damage assessment equipment, pandemic supplies in the fire departments for personal protective equipment and cleaning supplies. We talked about the EOC equipment. At the Emergency Operations Center, we have laptops and carts that we can turn a conference room into a fully functional Emergency Operations Center. We talked about the CERT caches. One other thing that we also have to be prepared are satellite phones. We call them SAT phones. We have 25 satellite phones in the city of Salem, both through the Emergency Management Division and the Fire Department as well. This would be a good time to also remind people that in the world of being prepared as the city is, we always want to encourage people to take a very active role in their personal preparedness. Roger does a lot of work in this area. The statistics usually are the same year after year. About 10% of the people really will raise their hand and say that they're prepared. They've taken the steps to be personal and prepared. It's very important. We used to always tell people, need at least a 72-hour kit. It's more like three to five days, and in a catastrophic emergency like a 9.0 earthquake, it could be weeks before people are able to get things back to any sort of normalcy. So, having an emergency kit, having food and water, to be able to take care of yourself is extremely important. We're very fortunate to have strong partnerships across the community, and I've listed some of those on this slide here. Many of these agencies are also part of our Emergency Management Committee. They meet on a monthly basis with us, so when we do need to ask a question or make a contact, we know who to call in these organizations. And when we open the EOC, they're right there with us, and they train with us, they plan with us as well. We've had some great successes in the area of emergency management. All of our fire stations have been seismically upgraded and have emergency power now, as well as City Hall has an emergency backup generation. Our EMPG grant, which is the Emergency Management Preparedness Grant that we get through the state, funds 50% of our program, and we just started our sixth year with that grant. We've been very successful for that. Also, mitigation grants and recovery grants that we've been able to get have been very key in getting our community back in the recovery phase and making it better than it was. We talked about partnerships. We talked about the technology that we have, the fact that we have EOC teams that have plans, training, and exercising, and are ready to go. And we do have success stories of our EOCs being open. In the future, as I mentioned, the Emergency Management Plan, we're getting ready to roll out the next addition of that. There's no substantive, there's no really changes to the plan. It's more of a formatting issue to make sure the format of our plan matches that of the county and as it stayed in the federal government. We're working with Mike Goderbach and the manager's office on improved mass notification systems right now, our SAFE program, which is the interface of all those data feeds. We're looking at an additional phase of that. We still have a lot of work to do in the area of community education, and we continue to reach out where we can in that. We'll be looking for technology enhancements as well, because technology is... We'll be looking for technology enhancements as well because technology is improving in at a very rapid pace. We have a our primary EOC, which is located downtown, but we have two backup EOCs that have been identified. Currently, we don't have the the equipment that's there. Our equipment that's at our EOC is portable, so if we're not able to use that building, we can move that equipment if we can get to that building and move it. But we in the long run, long run, we'll be looking for additional equipment to be able to stand up an alternate EOC site. Went through a lot of information. I know it was a pretty fast flyover, about 50,000 feet, but hopefully the the things, the bullets that were there helped reinforce your understanding of our emergency management program in the city and how we'd be able to respond to catastrophic events. At this time, I know Chief Neblock and I and Roger will be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
And if I could just add something, Jimmy. We also, as council maybe recalls, have a wonderful automated stream monitoring system right now. So whenever we have high water levels and streams on the emergency page, which will automatically come up, our emergency webpage becomes a homepage in an emergency, that any resident who has a computer can look at the stream levels where they are and help monitor themselves if they need to use sandbags or something else. And we're working on a kind of area-wide response so that we hope, before too long, we'll know if it rains this much in Detroit, when the high water levels are going to be at what level and what stream in Salem. So we're looking at a basin-wide study. We have a federal grant and a state grant to help us do that, and that's going to be extremely valuable to the community and to our emergency responders.
Wonderful. Are there any questions? Counselor Dickey.
Thank you. Yeah, thanks for the presentation. That was a lot of information, so that was helpful. So I I have a couple of questions about getting the word out to people. So for example, you showed the call center, that you were able to even bring in some CERT people to take over that during the flood. How would the public have found out that an alternate number was available?
What we did in in that, the flood of 2012, was on the city's homepage, was one of the main areas that we did that. If you go to the city's homepage, day in, day out, it has all the information of the city. We actually have the ability to flip that page to an emergency page, and on that emergency side, it tells you what's going on in the in the community. That that information is available at a link, day in, day out. But when we actually have something that was going on through the EOC, there was a decision was made, we can make, we can turn that. In fact, we can make that happen through through the Manager's Office just by by turning that. And and then working to put that information out there. These are the numbers that call. We also had information about road closures, what roads are closed, what roads were open, where the sandbag locations were at, where emergency shelters were located.
Thanks.
Other questions from counselors, comments? Counselor Clem.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a a couple, and then let somebody else ask. But I had, um, thank you for the information, Chief. The mass notification piece, I actually was in the middle part of the country and received a flash flood warning. And it changed my plans. There's an emergency broadcast system that will activate on cellphones, but is there any way of using social media, i.e. text messages, to go out to everybody about potential freezing rain, bridge closure? I mean, I understand website, but my my question really centers around, is there any way through our franchise communications companies that we can use cellphone technology and CCTV, which we operate, to provide other media to notify folks of things that we know are happening in terms of streams, flooding, bridge closures? Those are sort of the two things I'm I'm thinking about. But do we have that technology yet, and how far away are we from being able to activate text messaging and CCTV?
We do have, you know, our our alert, emergency warning system, the emergency alerting system, which we've had in place, we we have that. We've had that for quite a few years, but that's only through, you know, the traditional ways of of like television and airwaves. We're working right now with with the Manager's Office and Mike Goderbaugh. In fact, we met, we met today, we've been meeting weekly on a mass notification system. The trade name is Everbridge. It won't be rolled out as Everbridge here. It'll be the the city of Salem's Alert and Warning System. But it does speak directly to that, using all sorts of different mediums to to contact people. It uses white-page data, yellow-page data, and then opt-in data where where people will be able to register, create an account, register multiple devices, both in email, text, fax machines.
The idea is that they'd have to register. We couldn't take advantage already of the telecommunications capabilities of all the cellphone companies or the telephone companies, could we?
There there is, within our mass notification project, there is the ability to to use that. That's a, that's, and from a technical standpoint, probably getting out outside of my expertise, but the ability to work, to to get approval from the federal government to to do exactly that, that it would hit not only people that have opted in in a community, both whitepages are opting in a community, where we could notify those people, but we could also broadcast for people that are traveling through our area. And if their cellphones are in the area of the polygon that we designate, then they would get that. But but that's a sequential process as we as we stand our.
And we now have a Facebook page too, right?
Right.
The city of Salem, yes, we do.
So we could let all the Facebook friends.
That's right, yeah. And and currently, we do that with both emergency and non-emergency information, street closure type information, high water type stuff, the city's Facebook page, Twitter feeds that we have. Also, when, yes.
If I could just add, one of the nice things about the Everbridge system is if we just needed to evacuate an area of town, we can do it that way, from a small area to citywide. And so, and we have our regional partners. Many of them are going to be on the same system, so we could actually do it area-wise.
Yeah, what I'm hoping we can get is an open system that doesn't require you to have a password and a login and all that stuff, because that.
Well, as people opt in, they'll just automatically receive the notifications.
Okay, but they're going to have to opt in. We're going to have to get folks to sign up.
Right, and that is part, that is part of, communities that do implement these have have plans to do that. Typically, you'll see a lot of people opt in right after an emergency because they their neighbor found out about something, how did you find out? Well, you'll opt into this, and it's a way to get that information on on multiple telephones, multiple email addresses.
Yeah, and I just want to leave you with, I worked in the EOC in the 96 floods, and we used alert rosters. And so the folks who sign up for block parties for neighborhood night out, neighborhood chairs, anybody who's already willingly shared their information with us, it just makes sense that we could ask their permission to opt in to the system to get it going.
We intend to do that. We will have a, excuse me, a very big communication plan when we're ready to go to the Everbridge and and hope to get as many people registered as we possibly can.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Clausen, I think you had your hand up.
I did, thank you, Madam Mayor. I think my question was answered, but I just want to see if my terminology matches up. So we have the ability now to use GIS to track an area and notify people within that area of an issue or a flood or anything along those lines?
The the, we've purchased the Everbridge product, and and what we're working through now is that the all the administration and planning and how to roll that out.
Okay, so it's in process?
It is in process.
So we have the GIS capacity to have a lot of information, but one of the things we identified last year is we don't have a method for this mass notification. And so we found a product, which is Everbridge, and have been working on refining that. And we think Jimmy or Roger, it will go into place this winter.
Uh, I'm not sure timetable, no, there, it's a, it's a big, it's a big project. We, I mean, we do have, we do have it. It's operational, not ready for prime time, so to so to speak. We do have data in there, the white-page data and yellow-page data. So we do have the ability to to communicate with people from a traditional landline. But where the customer base would need to be expanded are those cellphones, email addresses, that people can get the message whether they're here or not. They, you know, they they may live in one part of town and work in another part of town, and they want to know what was going on in that part. But it's a lot of work to go on that, but we're working hard. We we meet weekly with our Everbridge team.
Great. Well, I'm glad to hear we're headed that way, because I know in that January flood in South Salem, it would have been nice to be able to kind of put a cloud on a map and say, let's call all these people and get them out of bed, so they know they're going to get flooded here in about a half hour or so.
Absolutely.
That's great. I'm glad we're moving that way.
Counselor Bennett.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The most common concern I hear from my constituents in in central Salem especially is flooding. But second is just a generalized concern about railroad traffic through the city carrying hazardous materials, whether it's oil or chemicals or fertilizers or natural gas. Is there, I I noticed that hazardous materials was on not high proba-, I think it was moderate probability. Do you all train in that? Are you, is there a new and updated version of that that goes with the oil that passes through and some of the other things going on?
Very good question. The answer is yes. We have, one of our hazmat techs is going to attend or has just attended a national class, three-day class put on by the railroad's safety folks to learn more about the rail the rail cart issues. We don't have, through Salem, we don't have that that light sweet crude coming through town here, but we do have other other things that come through town, obviously, on the rails. So we're aware of that, and we're prepared to respond to that. We have one of the 13 regional hazmat teams right here in Salem, prepared to respond. We have eight techs on, hazmat techs on every every day. So response time would be very quick to that type of an incident. And there's a wide variety. I mean, the last one we had was the 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 diesel spill in Pringle Creek was the last hazmat response. And so they were able to get there and mitigate that and and work through the issues. And and of course, a coordination with many other departments in the city, environmental services and and those folks as well. So the answer to that is we we do continually seek new training as things change. The the shipment of, the increased shipment of the of the oil that's that's more flammable than the normal tar sand oil, obviously, was something that that, I don't want to say caught people by surprise, but they really did increase in in volume quite a bit in some areas. So we are, we are prepared for that. There are some conversations at the state fire marshal level about resources, additional resources, meaning foam trailers and those types of things that may be positioned in certain places in the state that have more frequency of that kind of train coming through. We have, we have foam here. We don't have one of the foam trailers, however. So we are, we are preparing for that.
Great. Appreciate that. The other question is, where would you get ahold of the personal, you had a thing that said your personal emergency kit or your personal, you mentioned 72 hours of food and water, or preferably several weeks. Where, where do you find that?
Thank you for that. On our city's website, you can navigate to the to the Fire Department, and there's there's information there on emergency management. It has information about how to plan ahead, how to get involved with the CERT teams. And there's links in there to federal websites called ready.gov, all sorts of informations on on how to develop a plan, what to put in your kit, how to how to plan ahead so you you can, instead of going out trying to buy it all in one day, which can be quite expensive to to plan. But our city website is a good site for that.
Great. Thank you very much.
Counselor Clem.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Red Cross has also got a great pamphlet listing the, just the bare essentials that people should have in their homes, and probably one of the most important is water. Water can, will be an immediate issue in any emergency. My question is, what kind of, where are the preposition stocks of, I have two, of medical supplies and sandbags? Where do, if somebody calls Counselor Nanki up and says, hey, I need to know where to go to get this stuff.
City shops.
Yeah, I mean, what?
Good evening, Roger Stevenson, your emergency manager. The sandbags are at city shops, just as the counselor mentioned, in a large warehouse over there. So that's where the 80,000 sandbags come from, and our folks from Public Works could certainly tell me if I'm wrong on that one, but that's where I think they are. And the medical supplies are both our stuff for the H1N1 and all of that are at various fire stations, if I'm not correct. And then there's limited amounts of supplies at each of the CERT caches that are around the city.
So, and where are those?
They're in the neighborhoods. There's one up on Cunningham. There's one out at the very south end of town at one of the Slavic churches out there. There's one in Counselor Nanki's neighborhood down there on at Methodist Church. And there's three in West Salem. And there's, let's see, downtown, we are lacking one in downtown, but working on one down in the downtown area. And like I said, there are 13 of them spread around.
And those are really for the the CERT team members.
Not for the public.
Not for the public. So we're not, we're not posting the addresses on those. But they are really for the CERT team members. Roger mentioned the the pandemic supplies that we purchased for the H1N1. We store those, half of them at Station 11 and half of them at Station 5 and some locker rooms there. Those are, I mean, that's really the distribution point. Those, again, would be masks and gowns and and respirators for police officers, firefighters, Public Works, people in the city to use. And they're not really for public, public use. And we, we, you know, with the with the recent Ebola issue that's going on, we revisited that. We'll be adding an annex to our emergency plan. Under the H1N1, it's annex X is H1N1, but we're going to make that diseases, infectious diseases. And so we've, we've rewritten a new section for the Ebola issues. There are some different things you have to to do that the H1N1 stuff didn't really cover, and so we've had to adapt to that as well. And we're ready, we're ready to respond to that if that happens here.
Okay. And my last question is, and I see Dave Friedmacher here from the school district. Are we able to use, or have we even discussed with the school district, the auto dial, use of the auto dial? Folks work central Salem, kids are in school, West Salem, bridge's closed, freezing rain, oh my gosh, I got to get home. We all got to get home at the same time, or to get our kids. So have we ever entered into joint discussions about, you know, how we get emergency information out through the schools' auto dial programs? They tend to work really well for the public schools.
The risk manager from the school district sits in our emergency management meetings, and I have his number right here, where I can call him immediately if I needed to.
Yeah, several, several of us carry cards with all of those emergency numbers on it, and we've always had wonderful cooperation from the school district. And I met recently, the mayor and I did, with the new school superintendent, and we'll be talking some more about our joint emergency operations. And if I could just add one other thing about the sandbags, even though they all are, they start from Public Works, we, if we know there's an event coming, we move them around town so that they're convenient for people to find.
Yeah, it seems like we prepositioned a bunch at Orchard Heights Park. Are we intending to do the same thing potentially this winter? I just want to have the bags near where they're going to be needed, instead of Counselor Nanki's award.
The Public Works Department has a great plan that they're coming out with here shortly, I'm sure, and whether those sandbags are going to be prepositioned.
I'll be looking for it, like I want sandbags.
I believe Counselor Benar's had a question.
Just real quick on this. I get on an occasional basis, several a week, from the police department of something that has gone on with somebody. They're looking for somebody. I think there's currently a search for a young lady. We don't have this. I don't see anything from the Fire Department or emergency so far that comes out, that could come out to more people.
We have, we have a Twitter feed that's Salem Emergency, so it's not specifically the Fire Department. It's it's citywide that can be used. And we use the, we use the city's Facebook page. You know, the the Fire Department's mission often isn't, you know, looking for runaways or whatever those those texts are from the the Police Department. But we do use the Twitter feed, and we use Flash News, which goes out to all the media outlets. So if we have to put something out that that has a public interest, you know, for example, in the flood, we worked, we use Flash News extensively. I don't know if we used the school district's call out during the flood, but we were in communication with the school district about, should we close the schools early today? Should we get people on their way home? All those types of things went on. So we do use some of those, but we don't, maybe we don't have as much opportunity to use them as as maybe the Police Department might.
Okay. May for just a sec. We've, we're talking a lot of. Okay. May for just a sec. We're talking a lot of more or less catastrophic kind of events that would take place and how we're prepared for that. The minor ones, as a classic example that I can think of, is the traffic is all of a sudden backed up in downtown. It's real common. I've seen this, that something happens on the bridge or something happens someplace. I've no idea what's going on. People are asking me or the public at large wants to know, well, we're, you know, I want to get out of this thing and not add to the problem. Is that something, again, would it be on the page, the homepage of?
Well, it could possibly be on the homepage. It depends on the incident. That doesn't rise to the level of an EOC activation, while it's inconvenient for people who are in traffic. And I myself have been stuck in traffic a couple of times, wondering what's going on. We do use Flash Alert for that, which you can download on our phone and get the alerts right to your cell phone. Obviously, we encourage people not to be on their cell phones while they're driving. But that information-
This is an app?
Flash Alert, you can subscribe to it. It's like an RSS feed. And once you subscribe to that, it'll come through and you decide what, you decide which ones you want to get.
And I believe we put the full council on that not too long ago. So you're getting the notification.
Yes, all the councils should be getting Flash News. So if there's a, if there's a two-car accident on the bridge and it's blocking two lanes and that can back traffic up, you know, Friday night at 5:00, it gridlocks it. You know, when you're sitting down the street, you don't know what it is. That's a way to know. Another way, I'm going to put a plug in here for Pulse Point because I can't help myself. That app is a way to, you know, when the fire truck goes by, where are they going? You can look on your app. It lists a call. It may not have all the information, but if you see car wreck, you know, Marion Street Bridge, that's going to delay traffic.
I have Pulse Point on my phone. Yes. Thank you.
Counselor Dickey, did you have your hand up?
I did. Thank you, Mayor. So kind of going back to the communication piece of it, I am kind of curious. So it's been a while since we've had an emergency that activated the website. So I can't, it's been a while since I've seen it. But one of the things I've seen lately, just coming from the city communications in general, is when something is announced, it comes out in the form of a press release. Even, I've even seen events come out as a press release to the general public or even like on Facebook or something. It'll be a link to a press release, which is great information for media outlets and such, and it's all fine for us. But to somebody with limited literacy or limited language skills, it's very difficult to kind of navigate through that. Do you just put, do you put press releases on there? Do you have a way to kind of adjust your message for people that might have some limited literacy but really need the information? So I'm talking about the written information, not so much, I mean, obviously, something coming through in a text is going to be very short or whatever. I'm just curious if you adapt your material at all for that.
We have not at this time, but that's a very good point. We'll look into that.
Okay. Other questions from counselors? All right. Well, thank you very much. I think this has been a very helpful work session. I appreciate the work that the staff have gone to to help us to better understand all of the capabilities that we have and the things that we're working on for the future. I'm really happy to hear about how we're using the new technology and how we're planning to move right ahead so that we can always communicate as best we can. So that's great news. All right. I will adjourn our work session. And we'll have a little bit of a recess here and then try to get our meeting started. All right. Good evening, everyone. A call to order, this evening's meeting of the special meeting for the Urban Renewal Agency for the city of Salem for November 17, 2014. As part of our opening exercises, will you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right. Would our recorder please call the roll? Board Member Bennett?
Here.
Board Member Tesler?
President.
Board Member Nanki?
Here.
Board Member Clausen?
Here.
Board Member Dickey?
Here.
Board Member Rogers?
Here.
Board Member Benards?
Here.
Board Member Clem?
Here.
Chair Peterson? Here. Thank you. Tonight, we have no reports from boards, commissions, or committees.
Madam Mayor.
And I believe, oh, excuse me.
That's okay. That's okay. I wanted to make a motion, Madam Mayor, to approve the agenda for the special meeting of the Urban Renewal Agency for November 7.
Oh, all right. It's been moved and seconded to approve the special agenda for this special meeting of the Urban Renewal Agency. Moved by Member Bennett and seconded by Member Rogers. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Now, down to public comment? Anyone signed up for public comment? No, no one for public comment? All right. Member Bennett, do you have a motion regarding the consent calendar?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move the consent calendar.
Second.
It's been moved by Member Bennett and seconded by Member Benards to move the consent calendar. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. Just to highlight, these both are issues dealing with the North Gateway Urban Renewal Area. The first is to provide a grant to assist in construction of a new dental office at Astoria Street and Portland Road. One of the really great new developments going on out in the North Gateway area, out on Portland Road. Dr. O'Leary is moving his dental office. Where's Dr. O'Leary? There he is. And we also are voting on the strategic action plan for the Portland Road corridor to get that done by city staff and get ready to really begin work out in the Portland Road area.
Excellent. Any other discussion on those points? Although, okay, all those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We have no information reports this week on the Urban Renewal Board. We have no unfinished business and no public hearings, no new business, and we are adjourned. All right. I'll now call to order this evening's meeting of the Salem City Council for November 17, 2014. Would the recorder please call the roll? Counselor Bennett?
Here.
Counselor Tesler?
President.
Counselor Nanki?
Here.
Counselor Clausen?
Here.
Counselor Dickey?
Here.
Counselor Rogers?
Here.
Counselor Benards?
Here.
Counselor Clem?
Here.
And Mayor Peterson? Here. Thank you. And do we have additions and deletions? Counselor Bennett?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move approval of additions and deletions and corrections to the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Tesler to approve the additions, deletions, and revisions to the evening's agenda. Are there, is there discussion or questions? Counselor Benards?
There was a revision to the minutes. I was just curious what the revision was.
It looks like it has to do with the November 10, 2014 minutes. Okay.
The revision was a correction to the call of a roll call vote in the minutes.
On what item? Just a roll call? Okay.
Does that answer your question, Counselor Benards? We're okay? We're good? All right. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. All right. We have council and city manager comments. I think we have quite a few comments this evening, counselors. Do you have anything that you wanted to talk about? I'm looking at the faces. I think our city manager does. Would you like to share?
I do. I would like to ask Tibby Larson to come to the podium. And I want to talk about Tibby for a minute. As you know, Tibby Larson is our volunteer services coordinator with the Parks operation. And as council knows, we rely on volunteers so heavily in this community. And volunteers don't just happen. We have to have people like Tibby who really create the opportunities and encourage people to come and volunteer. And Tibby just won an award. It's called the Clover Award. It's celebrating leaders of volunteer excellence, that beautiful award. And from the Mid Valley Willamette Managers, Volunteer Managers Association. This is very prestigious. It says, Tibby Larson has earned the esteemed Clover Legacy Award for her contributions over many years to the professional role of volunteer manager for her assistance in developing other volunteer professionals and for encouraging active participation of volunteers in the community. Tibby, we've had the good fortune of having her work in the city for 13 years, and she's just played such an important role in making sure we have all of our wonderful volunteers. Last fiscal year, she coordinated the efforts of 1,620 Parks volunteers that performed a total of 60,500 hours of service, which would be worth over 1.3 million in labor hours. And she also coordinates the use of court-ordered community service workers and college work-study students. And I've been one of her volunteers from time to time in Parks, too, and I know she does a great job. So I wanted to thank Tibby and then give her a chance to make a couple of comments. So.
Thank you, Tibby, for your great job.
So I want to say thank you for inviting me here tonight and recognizing me. Every volunteer administrator in the world knows that it is not possible to have an efficient and successful volunteer program without the buy-in from the leadership at all levels. And I think your invitation here tonight proves that I have a buy-in from all of you. I wanted to also say that I'm so happy that Rick Scott hired me 13 years ago. I love my work at Salem Parks. I really appreciate the day-to-day support from my boss, Hugh Keever, and my boss's boss, Mark Nettell. It's a, it's a great place to work and I love my job and I'm glad I'm doing a good job for the city of Salem.
You are. Wonderful. Thank you.
I see a photo on our website.
I do, too. We need to get that right up on the website.
We'll do that.
That's great. That's great. All right. I have a couple of things to share. One is that I want to say a special thank you. The weather turned cold very quickly a few days ago. It happened to have been on just about the day that the warming shelter training was going to be held in the city of Salem. And that warning, warming shelter training was going to be and was organized by Community Action Agency and also by Salem Leadership Foundation. And if some of you remember last year, when we first came into the winter months, we didn't even have a warming shelter program. And it came about really in response to the dire need of the very, very cold temperatures and the high snow. And Community Action Agency and the Salem Leadership Foundation and Red Cross and so many other organizations, as well as Roger Stevenson, whom I don't know if he's still in the room, but he was working 24 hours a day with that and our fire department and police. And everybody just jumped in and did it. Well, this year, they were so organized that they were planning a very well-organized, very well-planned training and had shared documents with me. I was most impressed at what we found last year that could be done better this year was already being planned. Well, all of a sudden, here came the cold weather. And instead of a practice, it became the real thing. And so for three nights, I think, the last three nights, the warming shelters have been open over at Community Action Agency and the Union Gospel Mission and Simanca House have had adjusted their hours so that no one is turned away, no matter what the time of night that they might come to the door. And I just want to really say what a pleasure it is to be a mayor in a kind, in a city where people come together every time there's a need. And I just, I started receiving their emails and updates on where they were and what they were doing. And really, my heart was just bursting because I knew that the need was so great. And right away, they had like 19 people the first night and more after that. So I just want to say thank you to those organizations and all of the volunteers out in the community that are thinking of others when the weather turns cold and they know that they need to get in out of that very, very cold weather. So good job to everybody who did that. We have other things to be happy about. Salem police officers and staff were recognized at the 45th Annual Oregon Peace Officers Association banquet. And it was Friday, November 7. And 14 members of the Salem Police Department received honors at this very auspicious evening. And we're very, very proud and fortunate, I think, to have the caliber of officers that are with the city of Salem who were able to rise to the occasion again and again and become of note and receive these distinguished honors. And I believe, I'm going to read off, can I do that? Read the names. Amanda Brandland, Barrett Byers, Omar De Marcos, Scott Emmons, Andrew McFerrin, Joe Miller, Robert Owings, David Smith, Steve Smith, John Stackhouse, and Oscar Zambrano. We are so fortunate because we have employees in our city who are distinguished and distinguish themselves and bring honor to our city. So congratulations to the Salem Police Department and those fine officers. We had a couple of other things happen this last week. A big celebration downtown, thanks to Urban Renewal Department and the city manager's office and really people throughout the city. Public Works was certainly instrumental. We have two buildings downtown now that have been renovated and restored and repurposed and literally brought to life. The Roth and McGill Crest Buildings at the intersection of Liberty and State. On Sunday afternoon, you couldn't find a place to park. You couldn't find a place to stand. There were so many people who came down for the ribbon cutting. Gail Calderazzo Doty and Doug Doty, literally, for the last couple of years, have just worked and worked and worked and worked to bring those buildings to life in such a new, new forward-thinking way. So I encourage everyone, try to get down there and take a look. Visit the Italian market when it opens. There are apartments. There are offices. There is a candy store. I'm going there. There's a coffee shop, as well as the very, very diverse kind of Italian market that's there. So encourage people to take a look at that. And last but not least, the Mexican Consul General came to town last Thursday night. We hosted a very special meeting for him. We invited leaders from about 16 different Hispanic and Latino organizations in the Mid Willamette Valley to come and talk with the Consul General and introduce themselves and tell a little bit about their organization and the needs that they are meeting and the opportunities. And I have to say that as I sat there at the head table and the people were coming and talking about what they're doing and who's involved, that I just was feeling more and more proud as I noticed that the Consul General and his staff, sitting on my left and my right, were just writing furiously. And at the end of the time, he turned to me and he said that in 22 years in the diplomatic corps, he had never had an evening like that, where people came and introduced themselves and told what they did. And he said the information is so helpful and the connections now that he'll be able to make were really significant to him. And he was very impressed with the leadership that we have in our community. And we both agreed that the Mexican Consul should be in Salem. So that's another thing to work on. So we welcomed our new Consul General, and I know he's going to be back to Salem to visit with us again and again. So that's all my good news. Yes, Counselor Clem?
Yes, thank you. It reminded me that, the reason I wasn't there, and I apologize for that, I was helping out with the Crystal Apple Awards at the Elsinore Theater.
Oh, right.
That happened Thursday night. And it's exciting to see what's happening in our classrooms through the school district and the new superintendent and the, just the life that the teachers have for the kids. They had 56 nominations, all the way from custodians to principals. And they chose 12, the top award-winning teachers. But the amount of time that these teachers spend in the classroom, both before the classroom, during the classroom, and afterwards, particularly in after-school programs, is just being during the classroom, and afterwards, particularly in after-school programs, is just beyond belief. And there are so many good things happening, innovative ways of communicating with students. Science teacher taking the solar system, and rather than showing charts and pictures, they all go into the gymnasium, and you're Earth, you're the moon, you're Pluto, you're Venus. And actually having them move about and understanding the pattern of what's been displayed in textbooks in my era. It's just very exciting just to see all these examples of really what's happening in our schools. And I think it's important for us to realize so much great volunteer work, but professional work with our kids. I'm very excited about what's happening and wanted to share that with you.
Great, I'm glad you did. Yes, I remember because there wasn't a place to park, which was wonderful. There was such a huge turnout for that at the Elsinore Theater. It was just great. It was wonderful to see. Wonderful. Okay, other comments? All right, right on to the meeting. We have public comment. I think we have some people here. That's good. Jeff Hogan, followed by Todd Irvine, and then Jim Seymour. So if you'll each please take your turn at the podium. You have three minutes. At the end of two minutes, the amber light comes on. At the end of three minutes, the red light comes on. You just state your name and address and begin talking. So our first person is Jeff Hogan. Welcome.
For the record, I think my handwriting is illegible. My name is Jeff Hyen.
Oh.
And that's fine, nobody can read my writing. I'm actually here on behalf of my wife, Marty, tonight. We live at 36031st Avenue, Northeast Salem. And I'm here to address you about your little thing later in your item here on the chicken ordinance that you're planning to make some changes to. First thing I wanted to note was that had I not been kind of paying attention through other channels as to having this happen, I'm afraid some of the things you're planning on maybe doing could actually put folks like us who have chickens in non-compliance status without even knowing about it. So I'd encourage, if changes are proposed to be made for ordinances, which you have people registered throughout the city, like the chickens, you might want to let them know. That said, I'll read you the letter that my wife prepared for you. What we're proposing, as you consider these ordinances, is actually a change in the number of chickens that you allow, from five to six. And hopefully you've received the letter that we emailed to you last night. And just for the record, I'll read it. Dear City Councilors, in order to provide more humane treatment for the hens of Salem, Oregon, I, my wife, am requesting that you increase the allowed number of adult hens from five to six. I, my wife, have had the joy of being a chicken mama for over a year now, and originally wanted to keep hens merely for the exceptional eggs they produce and the freshness to be had when they come directly from my backyard, and I'll attest to that. But something else happened. I fell in love. My girls have provided countless hours of entertainment for me, my family, and my friends this past year, and they have names. They are pets with benefits. One of the things that we have learned, and I can speak to this because I've learned as well, is it's a bad idea to introduce a single chicken to a flock. Y'all have heard the thing called henpect? Yeah, that's where it comes from. You throw a single chicken in there and it's not going to end well. So they would be treated, I see my light here, not too well. So what we propose, chickens like to be in pairs. So if you can do this in a way that allows the chickens to come in and leave in pairs, just increasing to six, you'll make a happier life for them and you'll have more of a benefit for the owners of the chickens. So I'll paraphrase the rest of the letter there and leave it be, but if we have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, my question is, is the limit five right now?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Yeah, all right, thank you. Other questions, comments? Councilor Benars?
So just out of curiosity, why six? I mean, if you had two hens, you could add two or three at a time, so why bump the number up in total, just because you're trying to get them in pairs?
Typically, if you lose one, be it from a hawk or natural causes, and you had five, then you can only then bring the one in. And we have typically added in pairs. And so it's just because chickens are social animals, they like a friend. And so, and they're hatched together in a lot of cases, you'll buy them as a pair, and they'll be best buddies all the way until they die. So if you lose one, it's really tough to enter a single.
I just didn't get the number was the issue for me. I understand, I have chickens.
Yeah.
So I, but if I had two, I can add two, but you just want an additional one. So if you had five, you lost one, you have now four, you can't have anymore until...
Right. And you want an equitable spread over the time, because you, if you're a chicken owner, you know that it takes a while before they start producing well, and then you have a really great production, and then as they get older, they sort of fade. So that way you have a nice cycle.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Todd Irvine, followed by Jim Seymour. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Councilors. My name is Todd Irvine, and I'm the general manager for the Mid Valley Garbage and Recycling Association located at 3680 Brook Lake Road, Northeast, here in Salem. First of all, I want to thank you and express my appreciation for allowing me to speak today on behalf of the Mid Valley Garbage and Recycling Association. As an association, it is our mission to continue to provide exceptional customer service to all members of the Salem community at a very reasonable cost to the ratepayer. I wanted to follow up with you today regarding the question that was raised at the public hearing on October 13. The question was asked, where the Mid Valley garbage recycling haulers, excuse me, are currently taking the recyclable material? As I mentioned at that public hearing, the haulers are currently taking recyclable material to a few different locations, including Garten Services, Far West Fibers, and SP Recycling. In addition, we send recyclable materials such as glass, metal, wood, concrete, mixed organics, and other commodities to additional markets for further processing. Some of these markets are to the north, some are to the south, some are to the east, and some are to the west of Salem. We ship recycled material to processors based on their ability to handle materials we generate that rates, excuse me, and at rates that are competitive. We have been communicating with Garten Services on a regular basis regarding their recent project and plan to work with them to reintroduce residential mixed recycling, once their new system is up and operational. We are very hopeful that once their new system is in place, it will allow Garten to competitively process additional recycling here locally. I also want to point out that the haulers have continued to support Garten by shipping commercial cardboard and other commercial recycling to Garten Services, and we're doing that on a daily basis. I represent a group of garbage recycling haulers, excuse me, haulers, the majority of which are next-generation, local, family-owned businesses. These haulers have been long-term supporters of Garten's mission to employ people with disabilities dating back years to when their parents shipped recyclables to Garten. Many of the haulers, myself included, not only support Garten Services through their businesses, but also through personal donations. We have always valued Garten's impact on our community and their amazing mission to employ people with disabilities. We wish to continue to support Garten, but also feel it is prudent to keep our processing options open to be certain that we have a continuous and competitive outlet for our recyclable materials. I also want to thank you for allowing us to serve the great citizens of Salem by providing solid waste and recycling services. As I stated earlier, it is our continued mission to provide exceptional customer service at a very reasonable cost to the Salem community. I would be happy to answer any questions or concerns that you may have regarding the shipment of recyclable materials. And in addition, I have Dr. Estelle Harlan here with me today. She's our solid waste management consultant, and she will be available for any comments you also may have regarding General Item 3.2A. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Are there questions or comments from any of our councilors? Do any of our councilors have questions? All right. Thank you. We appreciate you coming and being with us this evening.
And thank you very much for allowing us to participate. Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much. All right, Jim Seymour.
Madam Mayor and members of the council, on behalf of the Catholic Community Services and Catholic Community Services Foundation Board of Directors, I just want to thank you for the job you do governing the city so well. And I'm here this evening because we've been negotiating with the city and with Salem Kaiser Community Development Corporation to accept that portfolio of properties. We're very excited about that. You know, we've been in the community for, well, since 1938. Our mission is to champion the positive development of children and adults, to strengthen families and to build community. And of course, we do that without regard to anything other than our people's dreams and their needs and their willingness to do everything they can for themselves. We serve our poorest and most vulnerable children, adults, and families in the community. And on any given day, we're serving about 2,000 members of the community. It's just, you know, without housing, without adequate housing, the social services that we would try to provide just don't have the impact that they can. But when we can provide housing and we can support people who have barriers to employment to get to employment and then provide the social services, it's that triangle, housing, supported employment, and the social services that really help to lift people out of poverty. And we're just so excited about this partnership. And I can't express enough how grateful we are to the staff that we've worked with in negotiating this deal so that it becomes sustainable over the long haul for the citizens of Salem. So just here to say thank you and that we are all in on this accepting the portfolio.
Wonderful. We really appreciate you coming, and we appreciate all the work that you've been doing. And we're very excited about this opportunity as well. Housing certainly is the absolute cornerstone and the foundation to stable, healthy families in our community. So thank you for the work that you do for that. Are there comments or questions from councilors? Councilor Tesler?
Thanks for coming down tonight. You know, it's my pleasure to vote and yes on this and to support this wholeheartedly. And you know, when this first happened, that Salem Kaiser CDC was having issues, we were afraid of what was going to happen. And I was really happy to see that you rose to the occasion. And I have the utmost respect for Catholic Community Services and also for Salem Self-Help LLC for doing that, because you're right, we need this and we need housing for people with disabilities especially. And it's a great need in this community. And I really commend you, sir, and your organization for your willingness to step forward and shoulder the burden. And that's a good thing. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. All right. Appreciate you coming down. Thank you. We'll now move ahead to our consent calendar. Councilor Bennett, do you have a motion? Yes, Madam Mayor. I move the consent calendar with the following poll, 3.2A, by Bennett. It's been moved by Councilor Bennett and seconded by Councilor Benars to move the consent calendar with the one poll of the Item 3.2A. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. We have one public hearing this evening, 4.0A. With our, would our city recorder please introduce the hearing?
The city council will now hold a public hearing for the purpose of reviewing Planning Commission decision for partition case number PAR 14-09 for property located at the 1500 Block of Corden Road Southeast.
Okay, before we begin with this, I want to be sure to ask if councilors have any conflicts of interest that they wanted to declare regarding this property. All right. Seeing none, hearing none. We'll go right into our staff report. Welcome.
Good evening. I'm Brian Colborne, a planner with the Community Development Department. And tonight I'll be presenting the staff report for Partition 1409, a council review of Partition 1409 located at 1500 Block of Corden Road Southeast. At this time, I'd like to enter the staff report, its attachments, and the additional testimony that's included in your packets onto the case record. The subject property is located at the corner of Corden Road and Old McClay Road Southeast. The site has been a vacant site, industrial, designated for industrial use for many years until 2012, when there was a 45-acre rezoning of this area that included this site from its previous designation, which was a straight industrial designation, to a combination of industrial-commercial IC and multifamily residential RM2. The 2012 rezoning also included a request to partition the subject property into three parcels. The rezone for the site was approved to IC, as I said, and that's shown in purple here, and RM2, which is the multifamily residential, shown in orange on this map. It was recognized at that time during the review of that 2012 case that the rezoning and partitioning to create the new multifamily area would only be appropriate if there was a safe pedestrian pathway provided to connect the site to the neighborhood to the northwest of the property. Therefore, a condition was placed on the partitioning component of the 2012 decision that required the developer to provide a pedestrian connection to an elementary school, Miller Elementary School, located in the area to the northwest. Now, this aerial photo shows the lay of the land and the patterns of development in this area. The area that's shaded in yellow here is the neighborhood that's abutting the site, that's developed with residential, full range of urban services, schools, parks, and then farther to the west, commercial services. The subject property, however, does, although it's abutting this neighborhood, doesn't have any direct connections provided to it. And in fact, if a resident were to want to walk, as it is right now, walk to any of those services in that neighborhood to the northwest, they would have to walk along essentially unimproved highway shoulder of Corden Road and McClay Road. And so this is what it looks like today on McClay Road and Corden Road. The approval criteria in a partitioning application like this includes a criterion that states that the street system in an adjacent to the tentative partition plan must conform to the Salem Transportation System Plan, the TSP. And the local street connectivity element of the TSP does require vehicular and pedestrian connectivity. So there is policy foundation, and there's clear criteria for the condition that was placed on this partitioning in 2012. And then this is the condition, I won't read it here, but essentially what the condition did was it didn't specify a pedestrian route from the site to the neighborhoods of the northwest. It gave flexibility for the developer to find where that could take place. There was discussion at that time with the developer about possible routes that could be pursued. The decision or the application was approved, the developer didn't appeal it, and there was an understanding there between the city and the developer that that was a condition that was going to be satisfied for this project to move forward. Now, this slide shows the site and just a little bit more of a zoom-in of the site here with Corden Road along the south side of the screen and that neighborhood on the north side of the screen, on the top of the screen. Parcel 1 is the apartment site, that's the multifamily zone plan. I've got the apartment complex that was subsequently approved for that site, superimposed on this slide. And then Parcel 2 and 3 are vacant parcels that are designated for industrial-commercial development. In 2013, the apartments developer submitted an application for site plan review and building permits for the apartments that you see on Parcel 1 on this slide. Because there had been no final plat actually recorded yet at that time when the building permits were submitted, the building permits were approved, but had a condition requiring that the final plat be recorded prior to final occupancy being issued on any of the units in that apartment complex. And that's our way of working with developers when those situations come up, to help them move the project forward. And so, since 2013, the, pretty much throughout this whole year, these apartments have been under construction. They're almost finished. And this is, the shot was taken this morning, actually, just looking from the main entrance And this is just another view of the apartments. You know, throughout this year, throughout 2013, the developers were trying to satisfy that pedestrian connection condition. They were taking steps to try and find a route that would work. They were taking steps to try and find a route that would work. Basically, this next slide just shows the three routes that are kind of the obvious routes that have been identified that as staff we see as possibilities and in talking to the applicant that we know that they've considered. So again, there's parcel 1 with the apartment complex, and there's that neighborhood in the northwest and lack of connection. And so therefore, question becomes, how do you provide a connection? What route is available? What I have here in purple in the dashed line is what's referred to in your staff report as the Clydesdale option, Clydesdale Route. This would have connected to a stubbed street that exists right here that's actually, under the county's jurisdiction, this green line is city limits. It's a bit of a weird gerrymander of where the city limits are out there in Salem. So while most of this is in the city, this Clydesdale stubbed street is actually not under county's jurisdiction. And so, the developer, you know, looked into this option of providing a paved pedestrian walkway to the stubbed end. Unfortunately, when they approached the county, because they needed the county's permission to cross a reserve strip that was at the end of that street, county-controlled access to, the county said that they disagreed with that route and had concerns about safety for pedestrians using it. And I've got a photo here in just a moment that'll show you what it looks like, the amount of vegetation that's out there. It's heavily wooded, this land that's between Clydesdale and the site. The next option I have in blue here, and in your staff report, it's referred to as the 49th Avenue option. It's the most direct route, and it's really what staff assumed would happen, what we talked about with the developer when we were initially going through that approval in 2012. It would involve the developer acquiring an access easement across private property. There's an apartment complex that exists there called San Ian Village, and so they would have to acquire an access easement and build that paved route. It's at 180 feet, so it's very close. And I've got a photo that'll show you that as well. But it would provide the most direct connection. The developer who's here this evening can speak to the reasons why they believe that's not a feasible option, that this would be our preference. It's the most direct route for a number of reasons that we would be up for reference. And then finally, the third option that's in your staff report is in red here, and it's what we're calling the Corden McClay Route for pedestrian connection. It would be the longest, obviously. From what you can see here, it would be about 2,000, a little over 2,000 feet in length. There actually is an improved local street that runs from this intersection of Gaffin and Corden to the site. So it would be less than 2,000 feet of paved new pedestrian walkway. It would be completing the connection along Corden Road, which currently doesn't have any sidewalk improvements, and then along Old McClay and McClay to where there currently is a sidewalk connection about where that yellow starts there on McClay Road. This is available to the developers as an option under the condition, as the condition was originally written, and as we recommend that you keep in this decision this evening. It would have a side benefit of having these residents have a safe path to this triangular shape of piece of property, which is recently approved for a mini-mart. So it would be a connection to that service, a commercial service there as well. So this is the Clydesdale option that I mentioned a moment ago. I apologize for the photo. The sun was really bright this morning and it's not the clearest photo, but you can, this is just looking directly at that undeveloped land, you know, where Clydesdale stubs into it. And this is where the county refused to grant access, but you can see it's heavily wooded site. This is the 49th Avenue connection, that second route, the shortest route that I had in blue, and it's about 180 feet, like I said, approximately. And it would just go right along the back, kind of through the backyard of this San Ian Village Apartments to the apartment complex. The subject property you can see here under construction in the distance, and that's that same route just standing at that fence line looking north. So this is where they would run that for that second option. And then this is the third option. This is just standing at the corner of Gaffin and Corden, looking north along Corden. You can see Corden is not improved, but that third option would just involve a pathway somewhere close to Corden Road, perhaps not in the right of way, but perhaps on an easement on the developed site, maybe a little bit back from this highway, which is a very high-speed road. So that would be another option that we see as staff as being a good option to satisfy the condition. So just to recap, you know, I've thrown a lot of dates and information out, just the timeline in this. In 2012, there was a rezone to multifamily with a partitioning that included this pedestrian route requirement. In 2013, there was an application for site plan review and building permits for the apartments on the multifamily portion of that area that was rezoned. The plat hadn't been recorded, it still hasn't been recorded, because one of the conditions on that plat is to provide this pedestrian path. And so, city approved the building permits with the condition that you can't get occupancy until that plat is recorded and you satisfy that pedestrian route condition. Construction started. The applicant continued to look for ways to satisfy the pedestrian connection requirement. Construction's almost done now, and now the applicant has come back and said, we want this condition removed from the requirements to record the plat. We think, you know, we don't want to provide the pedestrian connection anymore. And so, you know, just kind of stepping back from this timeline, sort of from a long-range planning perspective, the staff's feeling on this is essentially that, you know, we do have this demonstrated need for multifamily land in Salem. And we're in the middle of the process to adopt a housing needs analysis for Salem, which does demonstrate the need for more multifamily land. So, you know, rezoning property like this case is one of those tools that we're going to likely need to use to fulfill and to fill that need for multifamily housing land. And, you know, in this case, our concern is the issue of public trust, essentially. You know, we went through this process back in 2012, and the community was involved in it, it was a public process, and we said, yeah, we're going to approve this rezoning, and it's going to have certain things, like a safe pedestrian connection for residents. 178 units is what's being proposed here and what's being built. And so, you know, we're concerned that now at the tail end of this process, that the city and the developer sort of does have a responsibility to follow through on that, to maintain that public trust, so that when we move forward, which we know we'll have to with the need for more multifamily land, that we'll be able to maintain that trust and that folks throughout the community, when they face these rezones, will know and have some confidence that it won't get changed at the very end, you know, will have kind of what we said would be required upfront. And so, just in closing my remarks here, I'd just like to very briefly touch on the testimony that was submitted. There was a letter from the Neighborhood Association supporting maintaining the pedestrian connectivity requirement. There was also a letter, several letters submitted into the record from the school district throughout this process. The most recent one was submitted just last week, and what it did was tried to clarify some of the information about the school district's preferences with regard to pedestrian connections. When this went to the Planning Commission, part of the discussion when the Planning Commission was in deliberations and when they ultimately scratched this condition for the ped connection, part of that discussion was, you know, the school district has said that if pedestrian connection is required, then they won't provide busing service for elementary school kids. And so, the representative for the school district is here this evening, if you have any questions. But the message that we wanted to just make clear is that that's really not a good way of looking at this as far as good planning. The preference would be, and I think what the school district has tried to clarify in their follow-up letter, is that they want safe pedestrian routes for kids. That would be the preference. And to have to have the school district pay for busing on a site where it's really unnecessary if the condition is met is perhaps not an efficient use of everyone's funds. And furthermore, remember this photo, this is where that Gaffin Road is, sort of enters Corden Road. This is where the school bus would stop. And so, the kid would still have to walk approximately 650 feet to get to the unimproved highway shoulder at Corden Road, just to get to the school bus if that were to be provided. So that's just another point. And so, in closing, you know, staff's recommendation is that the city council amend the decision of the Planning Commission to include the pedestrian connectivity requirement as recommended by staff. The developers have known about this condition since 2012. It was a requirement for very good reasons in 2012, and staff recommends that it be maintained because it still is a good requirement today. And that concludes my presentation.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate your report. And if there are questions, we'll come back to the staff after we have testimony, and we do have some people who signed up for testimony. We have Mark Grins and Ron Sturba. So, on Mark Grins, you get 10 minutes, I've just been told. So you represent the property owner, I believe. Welcome. And... I guess we'll get that all set up for you. Welcome.
I hope so. Madam Mayor, members of the council, my name is Mark Grins, and I'm with Multitec Engineering. Our office is at 1155 13th Street Southeast, and we represent the developers and the applicant in this partitioning and this matter before you this evening. The staff did a good job of outlining what this process has been to get here. My... I'm not technically, so I brought it. So when we went through the, when we did go through the process of the rezoning and the partitioning in here, we recognized that this condition was attached, which was specific in nature that it was to provide a pedestrian connection to Miller Elementary School, not a general pedestrian connection, you know, for the neighborhood, but predominantly to get kids to the school. We went through the process of working, getting their plans set up, working through how we would be able to satisfy that condition. This, again, is the same maps you've seen before that show the area in general. This shows the apartment site and the... Pardon? And there's the school we're trying to connect to. So what we did was, we worked with adjoining property owner to the south and west of us, and we acquired a pedestrian access easement along that boundary adjacent to the residential in order to be able to get over to Clydesdale. That was, that was a piece of property, the property owner that was willing to work with us, we were able to put it together. We put construction plans together for that, submitted that walkway plan to Public Works, got approval for that, submitted our easement to Public Works and to the survey section for that, and then had the one last issue to overcome, which was to get across the one-foot reserve strip. Went to, it took us four months to get through the county's system in order to get before the county commissioners, and which we were not invited to attend. And we got a letter back from the county that said that the commissioners had denied us the right to cross the one-foot reserve strip without any opportunity for us to provide any input as to what we could do to address their concerns relative to safety. We have the ability to remove a significant amount of brush. We were going to provide lighting and other stuff along that pedestrian pathway, but the commissioners determined that that was not a safe way to go. And this is the letter that we got from the county, and it basically outlined that they felt there must be a better solution, that we need to work more closely with the city Salem in order to come up with that process. So, we did it. So, the school district also chimed in to us that they wanted to make sure that we had a safe pedestrian connection, but if we didn't have a safe pedestrian connection, the school district would provide busing in order to overcome that issue. So, we continue to move forward. We then talked to the adjoining multifamily developer to the north, who's someone that we know. And we received what I'd have to categorize as a polite no. The criteria that he set down in order to grant us that pedestrian easement, if we would ever get to that point, was things like we would have to supply, meet his lenders' requirement that for any new encumbrance, they were going to require a fee that was equal to 1% of the face value of the loan, it was an $8 million loan. He wanted us to pay for the easement rights. He wouldn't specify what that was yet, and that he was going to require money for maintenance and upkeep of that pedestrian walkway for the future. Again, not specifying what that was. And we kept that dialogue going for a few months, trying to achieve the goal there, and basically ran into no way to get the answers in order to do that. So, that left us with the third option that staff has pointed out, which is to go out to Old McClay, up McClay Road, and meander through there. It's about 1.39 miles to travel that way. So we're sitting here saying, and I can do that, and I can build that. That's not why we're here. We're here because we don't believe that the children, who the pedestrian walkway is now going to serve, are going to do that. We think they'll find other avenues to try to get through there. And so, knowing that the school district, and I know it's not what the school district wants, but knowing what the school district says, if I can't provide a safe pedestrian route, the children will bust, so I'm back before the Planning Commission saying, this is it. This is what I control. This is my option that's out there today, and I don't think that that's reasonable to expect the kids to do it. So I'm going to provide, now I'm going to de facto create an unsafe pedestrian access somehow. The school district doesn't have to bust now. So I came to the Planning Commission, said, do you believe that's reasonable? They asked us to go back to the county. We went to the county and got a pretty good rebuff from the, from Montano and Mrs. Carlson about why we weren't back here, because they'd already told us no, and no meant no. So, we didn't get a chance to revisit that. So we went back to the Planning Commission, said, look, we went there, got told no. Do you think this is reasonable? And the Planning Commission voted unanimously to eliminate the condition because they didn't believe this was a reasonable way to do it, rather have busing be the option, knowing that as time goes on and we get some departments here, you get the convenience store, you get some activity out here, we're going to get development, and with development will come walkways. Now, most of you have seen me here before. I was here in 2012 on an apartment project where I tried to get cop plan zone change approved in order to put an apartment project out off of Liberty in a neighborhood where I was within about 400 feet of schools, I had easy pedestrian access I could create. And I was told by the council that that's just not quite the right place. We need to find the right place. So we end up taking, having a client who wants to go out here. So now we're out. I don't have any neighbors that are telling me no, but I got some other difficulties to overcome. But time will bring those together. That Whittaker Street, that street that we built through this project, will be extended. And when it's extended, it'll connect to Clydesdale and Seattle Sluice, and with that will become a safe pedestrian connection. Now, like I said, I can build this if the council believes that this is the best option out here, so that that's where the kids go, so they don't get bust. I would have told you, I could have created a safe one over to Clydesdale. I would have just removed enough brush, put lighting in, but I had to do some security fencing, some other stuff. I was willing to do that, but I never got to that point. I have spent months, I mean, I filed this application to get the partitioning, to deal with this condition of the partitioning in July. That's how long this process takes. It took me months to get to the county to get no, working with the other property owner to get basically no, to get to this process to get home. You know, staff makes it seem like we wait till the last minute to come running to you to say, oh geez, you know, we're almost done, we can't do it. I can do it, but I don't think that's the best choice. Now, you know we're going to have to provide sites for multifamily. They're not going to, if any of you were here during the smurfel process, you remember what that's like. You're short 290 acres of multifamily land to me, based on your housing and economic needs study. I sat on that advisory committee. Mr. Council Bernard sits on it with me. Others of you have been involved in it. We know what's out there, and they stay... And they stay — and Echo Northwest, it was the staff consultant helping there, pointed out that siding for multifamily is the hardest thing for communities to deal with, because you all need them, and nobody wants them in their neighborhood. Everybody needs housing. Catholic Community Services tries to do their part. We've got developers that are trying to do their part, and we've got little things that we can't control, we can't get past. And I don't think it's unreasonable to come back to the city and say, yeah, we understood the condition, we knew what it meant, we tried, and we're here, and we don't think that's the best option. And I'm asking the council to look at this the same way the Planning Commission did and agree. Pedestrian connectivity is important, and it should be strived, and I believe it will be achieved, but that's not the best option for the — at least for the students that are out there. I can do it for other pedestrian connections if it was important, but for students, I don't think so.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. Are there questions from councilors? Counselor Clausen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Grins, for the testimony. Can I clarify a point? Did you state that the property for an access was purchased going down to Clydesdale? Is that currently in the possession of the developers?
We have that easement.
Okay. So the easement is there, and there is a potential plan, which I'll ask staff about later, that would theoretically fulfill that as long as that access across was granted by the county?
Yeah. The one-foot reserve strip was the only obstacle that we couldn't get past.
Okay. Thank you.
And that was my question. Counselor Nanki, was that your question? All right. Counselor Tesler.
Hi. I thought there was a third access point. You didn't talk about that, did you?
There are three. There's the Clydesdale — I'll go back here.
You talked about that.
That's the Clydesdale one.
Yeah, you talked about that. You talked about the lawn one.
Then the next one is...
I want to know about the little short one.
That one?
Yes.
That was — that's through private property. That's the one that staff showed, the nice green grassy area through there. We worked for several months with that particular property owner, and we could never get to the end of the list of conditions, one of which was, we had to satisfy his lenders' requirements for an additional encumbrance, which they were going to charge a flat 1% of the face value of the loan. So 1% of the face value of the loan for that project was, we were told, was over an $8 million loan. So that's an $80,000 fee just for that. And that wasn't — that was just a start. I believe that what we were being told was politely no, but without being a no. But I think, I don't think I ever would get to the end of the conditions that I had to satisfy.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Oh, Counselor Rogers.
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, Mark.
Hi, Bruce.
It's been a while.
Yeah.
Is the entrance going to be off Corden Road for the apartments?
The entrance does come — the entrance comes off of that new street we built that lines up at Gaffin. It comes in, it's called Whittaker, as it heads to the southwest, and the apartment takes its access off that new street we built.
Okay. And then the vacant property in the corner, that's commercial zone, is that?
It's — you're talking about in the upper corner there? That's, it's IC, industrial commercial.
So is it the same developer or the same owner of the property?
Today, it's still the same owner of the property, not the same developer of the apartments, but owner of the parent parcel.
So the vision of the future, what's the future look like, how soon that would be developed in the IC zone?
Well, we know that they've had some discussions with some retail uses that would like to go there. You have the market and convenience store that's set to go in that little triangle up there. I believe that they're been through site design review. I think they're getting ready to go to build that. That should help spur other actions on the balance of the property that my client controls. That's his hopes, so.
One more. So if you end up going with the Corden-McClay option, would there be a master plan with that, with the future development, that I would, you wouldn't have to rebuild it again, or are you just going to put a temporary street or a temporary block top path?
If I have to go with this option here, I'm going to build it as directly as I can over to Old McClay, probably from the bend in the new street, and go through that field and lay it down, because I don't know where my other access point's going to. I prefer not to take them out parallel to the edge of Corden. I don't think that's the place to take the kids. I know that I can create a nice paved area with a little bus shelter that my clients want to do if we're going to have children picked up out at the Corden-Gaffin intersection so they have a safe and adequate place to get out of the way while they're waiting for the bus. But I don't want to take the pedestrian traffic, if that's what I have to do, right next to Corden. I'll take them and create a pathway somewhere inland.
So it would be more of a temporary path at this time?
This was always envisioned to be temporary whichever way I went, because eventually Whittaker will come through and tie into Clydesdale and Seattle-Salu, and then I'll — you'll have a concrete sidewalk all the way.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. I believe Counselor Nanki, followed by Counselor Clausen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thanks, Mr. Grins. How wooded — we saw a picture of the end of Clydesdale there with the brush. How deep is that?
Well, there's quite a bit of — there is quite a bit of brush in there, but we had authorization from that property owner to go in and remove as much of that brush and wooded — it's not really woods, but it's brush, that we needed to in order to construct the walkway and to make it safe. We just haven't done that because we haven't gotten that far. We were ready to. Contractor moved in, did some minor brushing so that we could get stuff staked out so they could tell where everything was going to go. And then we started working with the county on the one-foot reserve strip and just never got any further than that. So it looks pretty ominous there, but it was something we intended to clean up, and the property owner had no objection to how much of it we cleared up, because he just assumed that we got rid of all the brush on that property. But we could have got there, but we didn't get that opportunity.
And is that the plan, to actually remove all of the brush eventually as well? It'll have to be where the street connection goes through.
Ultimately, that would happen, yes. But that's not our — now, that's not — we don't control that property. Now, that's somebody else. We just got the easement to get through there with permission to do what we needed to do, so.
Right.
All right. Counselor Clausen, and then Counselor Clem.
Thank you, Mr. Grins. I don't know how much you can speak for your client and not, but if the require — I mean, would your client be amenable to making that, the connection either way, to make that happen? Because, I mean, pedestrian connection is pretty important, especially for multifamily properties, for sure. And as we know, development can go in fits and starts, and we might be 10 years away from something more happening, but we might be six months away. Who knows?
I can tell you that my client was prepared to build the connection to Clydesdale. We had that all set up. My client will spend the money and build the connection to McClay and up that way, if that's what council and everybody decides to do. The charge that we were given was to come back to the Planning Commission to amend that decision because we didn't feel that that was the best option, knowing that the school district would, not willingly, but would provide busing for the students if there wasn't a pedestrian access. And that was what we were trying to achieve, was to provide the safest way for the children to get to the school, not the cheapest way. That wasn't the issue. So I hope that council understands that. That's not what we're here for. We're not here to get out from under spending money. We're here to provide something that's safe and that we think will be usable. Our fear is that the kids will find some other way. Those that are small won't. Their parents will take care of them. Those that are older might try, and then we haven't achieved what we could achieve, even though it's not the best. I mean, I — we recognize that, but I think we're trying to say, what is reasonably prudent, not necessarily just because it's great planning, because great planning doesn't always work in the beginning.
I appreciate that. Procedural question, if I may?
Yes.
Maybe for the attorney. I've realized I'm grilling Mr. Grins with questions. There's public testimony, and then he'll have an opportunity for rebuttal and future questions. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. We might consider that. I'd let everybody else talk before we get all our questions. I just thought of that, Madam Mayor.
All right. Counselor Clem, and then Counselor Bennett, then Bennett.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Real quick, if you built the connection to Clydesdale, when you talk about the one-foot buffer strip, kids don't care if it's county or city or what. They're going to go the direction of the school. So the question is, is your client willing to build up to the one-foot strip and let the kids go 12 inches without caring?
Well, we suggested that to staff, and that if they just changed the wording of the condition, then I could probably get there. But I, probably under advice of council, I couldn't quite get there. But anyway, I believe that the one-foot — the sidewalk is already built over the one-foot reserve strip, so it's not like they got to step across some hazard. They just step off our walkway onto the sidewalk. But the county controls that. They have the — Marion County actually controls under the — we don't do it today, but under the old rules, we created a one-foot reserve strip so that agencies like the city and the county could control who gets access off the end of the street, so you couldn't just build a driveway off the end of a street and then never have a — and then never be able to get a street to go forward. That was the theory behind it. We don't do that today, but back then, we did, and so...
So if we chose to ignore that, or just pretend that kids are going to go, where kids are going to go if they're going to school, bottom line is your client's willing to build Clydesdale connection?
We still are. As long as you can figure out a way to word the condition so I can provide an easement to the one-foot reserve strip, but don't have to cross the, don't have to deal with the county, we're prepared to do that.
Counselor Bennett, followed by Counselor Bennett.
Mr. Grins, I'm looking at this map, and I'm wondering why your walkway didn't extend all the way to the school grounds instead of stopping at Clydesdale. You said the guy was interested in having his property cleared. Why not just shoot the thing all the way down to school?
If we brought that issue up, and I wasn't the one that had the communication, I would be, I'd be more than happy to pursue that if the school district would say they'd allow us to have access to the back part of the school there.
That's your only limit, is the school district?
David's here, and he can discuss that, but that wasn't...
Well, I'm just, it sounds to me like you haven't explored all possibilities. And the one you're bringing to us is, without a doubt, the longest possible route that could be done. If all it takes is working with the school district to gain access to the school grounds from a walkway, that's the limit now.
If you...
They're worse than the county to deal with over 12 inches.
No.
No? Okay. Well, that'll be, I hope you look at that.
I haven't, I haven't...
I hope you look at that.
We haven't come right out and gone to the school district and said, can we? But I believe that that question was asked by my staff, and I believe that we were told that that wouldn't be a viable option, but...
I am disappointed that's not part of your testimony, that to the extent that you described the other options. It doesn't sound explored yet.
All right. Counselor Bennett.
I think my question mostly has been answered, but that one, I just want to confirm, that one-foot reserve strip goes across Clydesdale. It doesn't go across or come out in the same direction that the street is flowing?
It goes across the perpendicular to the street, across the very end of the right way there.
So therefore, you don't, in order to get to the school, you wouldn't have to cross that one-foot reserve strip?
You would have to cross it, yeah.
You would?
Not to go to the school. If you went straight down the property line, no, but if you went to the, if you want to get onto Clydesdale, you got to cross that thing.
I understand that. Thank you.
I have a question, I guess, or maybe it's a comment, but in looking at these diagrams, it looks as though the access onto Clydesdale would be the most logical from the property. If a person had a choice of different paths to take, that would seem like a logical path for people to take.
That was what we thought. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And the other thing, I just might make a comment that we keep talking about, well, but the school bus could go here, and the school bus could go there. School buses only run once a day in the morning, and once a day at the end of the day, Monday through Friday, or the days that there is school, and not in the summer, and, you know, not on the vacations and the holidays. It seems to me I'd hate to see a choice between a school bus or a path, because the school bus really isn't a choice. Most of the time, the children are going to be going to their friends, not during the time they would be on the school bus. It's the other, it's the rest of their lives that they're really trying to get connected to their schoolmates that are going to be in that neighborhood. Maybe the school isn't even their destination. So I'd like us to be thinking beyond just school and beyond just the school bus.
Madam Mayor, the issue was, as the condition was set out, was dealt directly with connection from the apartment site to Miller Elementary School. We took that to mean that the purpose of that pedestrian access was to provide the opportunity for children to go from this project to the school.
Right.
Busing them would meet the same goal. The other things that staff brought up about the pedestrian access and all the other things that could do came up when we came back to the Planning Commission and started explaining the logic of what we ran up against. That was not the discussion early on.
I understand, I understand what you're saying. My point is, had I been making the rule in the very beginning, I wouldn't have been in talking about school buses and school grounds. I would have been looking at how people live their lives in a neighborhood, and how kids live their lives in a neighborhood. So I realize that the staff put that in, and that was put on you, but I'm just making a point that I hope in the future, we think beyond something that's a service that only comes a couple times a day on only certain days. So that's just my comment. Okay. Were there other questions from councilors? All right. We have another person that did sign up also to testify, and that's Ron Sturba. Mr. Sturba, I believe you represent the SEMCA Neighborhood Association. I believe that that you have five minutes. Is that correct? Looking at our city attorney, five minutes. Oh, good. Five minutes. Okay. There you go. Welcome.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Counselors, the city staff, and Mr. Grins. I'm Ron Sturba from the Southeast Mill Creek Neighborhood Association, were gathered here because of someone's idea posing a pathway, a pedestrian pathway, a bike pathway, a pathway for safety, a pathway for community union. And however you say it, it's about our community. It's about pride, the time we take in our community. It's about leadership in our community. It's about family. Without pathways in our lives, we would become disconnected personally, our family, and our community. Before us, we have a developer who has built many residential buildings with the thought of family. First homes for moms, dads, children, and grandparents. We all share in them. They are all family. They are all elements of our community, like our city government, our schools, and our neighborhood. What do they all have in common? Neighborhood unity, family unity. There is not one person here that I think would interfere with common family values. Just like our communities, they grow, annexation... Just like our communities, they grow, annexation takes its place. People say, why didn't they think of that pathway when they built the subdivision? I am one neighborhood member who has worked in the neighborhood for 27 years. Our Neighborhood Association worked with community leaders, volunteer residents of Munkers Avenue Southeast. They have a pathway from their neighborhood to the shopping area in Ricky's Southeast. Yes, it was completed this year. Poor planning, maybe. Oversight, I believe so. We need to think, what's next? Why was this important to the community for safety? Because safety involves all ages. Increased safety by the elimination of walking to and down a busy street to shopping areas. The elimination of forcing our children to traverse near high auto traffic areas of a main street. Important? Absolutely. This pathway should be built, allowing parents to walk their children to school. Reduced auto usage means increased safety for our children. Exhaust emissions limited? Yes. When neighborhoods connect, people connect. Schools connect, sporting events connect, and families connect. Last of all, love of our community connects. So, Mr. Developer, part of your product is building on a solid foundation. Making sure security and safety is building to your weight-bearing walls for the slogan of home sweet home. I agree. I say, home sweet home. Please include this pathway. We will be forever grateful to you. Give our community that sense of pride and ownership. I thank you, and God bless you all. And if you're wondering about this mitt, when I walk outside, the conditions will require that I have too. So, important planning is a part of the safety element. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there questions of Mr. Sturba? Well, we appreciate your testimony, appreciate your service in the Neighborhood Association, and thanks for coming down. Thank you. All right. I believe that, that we have another person in the audience, Mr. Friedmaker, who is, represents Salem Kaiser School District. Would you be willing to come to the microphone and talk with us about the particular school in that neighborhood, and access to the school?
My name is Dave Friedmaker. I'm with Salem Kaiser Schools.
Thank you. Welcome. We appreciate you coming to the microphone. You have a couple of minutes to talk with us about it, and we would just appreciate a chance to have some input from the school district's point of view. I know there's a letter in our packet.
We submitted comments about preference for the pedestrian connection. The elementary school students, if they can be less than a mile from the school, would be able to walk to school. The middle school students, if they're less than a mile and a half from Howe, could walk to school. And then the high school will have to be bused. If there was a pedestrian connection, however, the high school bus could stop on McClay, where it stops now at 49th, and would not have to stop in the middle of a parkway, which is what Corden Road is designated as, is a high, high-speed, high-volume road for inner, inner-city, and more of a regional connection than it is a neighborhood connection.
Okay. I understand that there is a pathway at the back of the school. Can you talk about that a little bit?
There's not a pathway currently at the back of the school.
There's a path at, through the school grounds that would lead to the back of the school?
The school, there's, there's a play yard at the back of the school, that, there's a fence there that butts this, well, it's not the, the property that we're talking about, but it's the part where that, that brush was shown, that, that property.
Okay. Counselor Clausen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for coming down tonight. Is it common practice for the school district to allow kind of back-of-property pedestrian entrances throughout the district, or if, if that was approached to the school district, do you have any feel for if that would be an amenable type of access?
I think it could be done, yes.
And that would be something that would be able to run up the chain there for a conversation, at least?
Yeah, I, I believe so. It was discussed early on, I believe, in this planning process for this development. And one of our concerns with, was the long connection, the, the long pedestrian path, and who was going to maintain that, and make it, make sure it was, the brush was cleared, and it was safe for children to walk through, and it wouldn't fall on the school district or the city to, to maintain that property, to make sure that it remains safe over time.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Dickey?
Thanks for coming down. Could you just clarify? So, with the, the longer path that he showed up there, that was 1.39 miles, would that be long enough that elementary students would still be bused? Or would that be adequate to, for them to not be bused?
The state regulations would require if it's over a mile that we bust the students. It could give us an advantage that we could pick the students up on McClay instead of on Corden Road. And we do not want to pick up students on the, on Corden Road if we don't have to.
All right. Thanks. Counselor Nanki?
Thanks for coming down, David. Question on bus pullouts, and if they just pulled right up alongside on Corden Road, all traffic both directions would have to stop? Unless there was some kind of a, how, how big of an off-road facility would have to be there to actually not stop a parkway?
Well, if the bus is going to stop, it'd stop in the middle of Corden Road, in the lane, the middle of the lane, and would turn on its flashing lights, and all traffic in all directions will stop while we pick up the students. And there'd be a bus for elementary, middle, and high, at least three buses in the morning, three in the afternoon, and sometimes we'll have midday buses and small buses for special needs or special programs. So, there could be, it'd be at least six buses per day, but there'd probably be more.
Okay. Yeah, that'd be great.
If, in terms of a pullout, I did talk to our transportation director, and he would, would like to have a deceleration, an acceleration lane. And if you do a pullout, the bus would be on the side of the road and would not have its flashing lights on.
Counselor Clem, you have a question?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah. My questions have nothing to do with Corden Road. I don't even want to think about it. School buses stopping there. My question has to do with Clydesdale. I think you answered Counselor Clausen's question, that you would allow access to that, that portion of the school grounds, which is a playground. But, you would consider likely, the risk management and transportation facilities would likely approve a southern entrance, walking path?
We have in the past, so I would think so.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
I have another follow-up question. So, I'm looking at the diagrams, the aerial photograph of the school, and it clearly shows that there is a path at the backside of the school that connects just right at this sort of point where the shrubbery ends and the, the adjacent property comes right together. So, I'm not understanding why our, why the developer couldn't connect to that path, unless I'm not seeing this correctly.
There's no official path there. There may be an unofficial, where somebody's just walked through there and created a path.
Mr. Coburn, I have a question. Did we, did our staff supply this, or did the developer supply this?
I believe that was provided by the Public Works Department staff, yes.
Well, it looks to me like it clearly has a path on here. I really don't...
I'm...
Mr. Fernandez, does that look like a path to you?
Mayor Peter Fernandez, Public Works Director, in, in reviewing the, and that is, that is our aerial. This is, I mean, this is, what Mr. Coburn is showing up on the screen is Google Earth, which is typically sourced from our aerial, so, so it might be that on closer inspection is what Mr. Friedenmacher speaks to, that it's an informal path, but, but, but...
Uh-huh.
Yeah. Whether it's paved, or dirt, or whatever, there clearly is something going on there.
If I could, my, my understanding was that there was initially some discussion about connecting to the, to the school, the school property, and that there were some safety concerns similar to what the county had expressed. There was, there was also a, a area that was designated as wetlands in that area between Clydesdale and the school district, and so, that doesn't necessarily mean that there isn't a way to provide the path, but that was why it didn't become a priority in the, in the routes that were outlined in our staff report. However, if it, if it is an option, it certainly could fulfill the, the condition's flexible enough that, that that could fulfill the condition.
Okay. Well, I, I tell, I can see clearly that this aerial view and the aerial view that you have on the screen clearly don't look like the same aerial view. So, in one, it looks like there's a very clear path, and then on the other, it looks like it's sort of that random, non-path that people are using. It just, I'm just confused as to why we would be supplied with something that looks like a path if it's not a path, when we're here to talk about the path. So, I'm a little frustrated about that. Yes, I think our city attorney has something to say.
Glenn, do you know what the 120-day decision deadline on this is? Okay. Can we, can we take a short recess to talk about some procedural matters?
All right. We will take a short recess. Thank you, everybody, for your patience and your input. And I would entertain a motion, or I can go ahead and make the motion. Do you want to make the motion?
I'm going to get rebuttals.
We're not ready for, I think we're not ready for a motion then, if we should allow for rebuttal.
Staff has requested that council adopt a motion to continue the hearing to December 1st, to allow, allow staff to investigate the, the path issue.
So, then we wouldn't have rebuttal until we come back?
You're welcome to continue to ask questions of staff, and then continue the hearing.
All right. Then I will make a motion.
No, I'd still like to ask some other questions of staff, in case we want to get some other things taken care of during a, a potential continuance.
All right. Then let's call staff back, and I believe we have some questions from, from council, excuse me, from councilors. All right. Welcome, Counselor Clausen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
And then Counselor Nanki.
Has, has anybody in staff had conversations with the county about what their concerns are?
The county submitted a couple of letters throughout the process, and the concerns are about safety, and the, the fact that the, most of that site is heavily vegetated, and that there was a concern about, if you just clear a path for, for a paved walkway, that it could be, still not a very safe place for folks to walk. That, that's the county's concern. That's not necessarily our concern. The applicant has, has stated that they would provide lighting and, and some other things to improve safety.
And to follow up on that, was there any conversation between staffs at the city or the county about the decision from the commissioners about if there were conditions that could help with that, or anything else that we could go beat them up with? I...
Excuse me. Counselor Clausen?
I mean, I mean, go talk to the commissioners about...
We tried to communicate...
Cabulery is everything in this business.
Sorry, Madam Mayor.
Figuratively speaking.
We did try to communicate with, with the county staff throughout the process when the applicant was trying to get an answer from the county commissioners, and they gave us a pretty clear letter that pretty, pretty clearly said that they, they were not in favor of, of that Clydesdale route for a safety concern. So, there wasn't like that back and forth between our staff and their staff.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Nanki?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm assuming then Seattle Slough has the same one-foot restriction?
That's correct. It's part of the same subdivision.
And is it possible for staff to bring us back either still photos along that potential route to Clydesdale? Little, from the other side, from the, the actual project side, from parcel one, and what that pathway would actually encompass from ground cover?
Well, it's, it's not cleared yet, so we can get close to it from the north side and take some photos, I suppose, and, and get as far into it as we can and take some photos, of give you a, kind of a flavor of, you know, how thick that brush is. Yeah, sure.
Yeah, it would just be nice to know what, what we're looking at, cutting through, even if, you know, all the way down to the extension to the, the school property, even. We could potentially do that with a Google Earth shot and zoom down in and across. I know, I saw IT kind of moving up and down, but it's always nice to get a, a visual at ground level of, of what the parcel actually looks like. I drive by it every day, and I don't look that deep into it, and couldn't actually recognize where Clydesdale comes in, but I don't necessarily want to go walking through the property, or the city attorney will get mad at me.
Counselor Benars?
So, as long as we're going down that path, I just want to make sure that the other end, at the school end, that there is something that we can connect to. I've seen two different, the council has seen two different photos of that area tonight, and I just want to make sure there's clarity of a pathway, once you exit off of that into the school grounds, that the kids aren't walking past or through muddy fields to get to their...
Okay, understood. We'll come back with that information.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Nanki?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to clarify one piece. Nobody can move into any one of these apartments that are completely done until we figure out whether or not they get a pathway or not?
Glenn Gross, the Community Development Director. The condition of the site plan approval was that all of the conditions of the partition, including final plat of the partition, had to be completed before occupancy permits would be issued. It came to our attention this morning that apparently, and I think you might have saw, one of the photos said, there was a sign saying, "For rent."
Uh-huh.
Came to our attention that it appears that apartments are being rented out now. And this would be inconsistent with that condition. We checked our files to make sure that we don't have a record of issuing an occupancy permit, couldn't find one. So, late this afternoon, we were able to make contact with the manager of the, of the apartment complex, and asked about what was happening, and we're told that they indeed have three occupancy permits. Well, we don't know what they've got, we don't have a record of issuing them, so we need to tomorrow make contact with them. This is a long answer to your question, but as far as I know, as far as the record would show, they are not supposed to be occupied until the final plat is approved, and that has not happened yet. So, we'll find out what, what, if anything, they have, that they're using to rent those apartments out. And we've also told them, stop until we come to a conclusion about, you know, exactly where we are with this.
And that just gives me, you know, pause. If they're ready to move people in, and we're going to continue this, they're still not getting, you know, money from people who are trying to move in. But, it'd be, is there nothing we can do as far as adding in this pathway piece after... But it'd be, is there nothing we can do as far as adding in this pathway piece after they have the potential for occupancy? Final plat, is there any way to make an adjustment to where they can do their business, and then we figure out what to do with the pedestrian connection? Are they so hard locked together that it all goes as one package?
Right. Tonight, you're only looking at the partition question. This condition that I'm referring to was for the site plan approval that is done, and with, that's the basis that they use to build the apartments with. So they are, they are locked into that condition of approval on the site plan, unless through the partition process tonight, you amend that condition, or you affirm the planning commission's approval to delete that condition, then they would, but they still would need to final their partition plat. It would just be, without having to put the pathway in.
And does that actually have to identify the actual pathway?
No, it has to just show, as Brian was saying, it's flexible enough so that there just has to be a pathway, it doesn't have to be a specific one.
All right, let's see. Counselor Rogers, followed by Counselor Clem, and then Counselor Dickey.
Thank you, Mayor. When I look at the school district letter, they talk about the criteria for a bus, pretty much on how far the school, so it's the elementary school is within a mile. Is this within a mile? With, I'm having trouble figuring out, elementary's a mile, junior high, middle school, a mile and a half, and then a high school's going to be bussed anyway, no matter what we, it looks like. So I, I don't know where the mile is, though. Is it a mile, the long way or the short way? Where's, where's a mile at?
Yeah, if, if, if the, the shorter options that we've looked at this evening are built, then there would be a connection, and it would be, it would be within a mile. If that longer route were provided, that's where Mr. Friedenmacher from the school district came down a moment ago and clarified, that actually still, that would be 1.39 miles, I guess is what, was what the applicant put on their, on their map, and so, there would still be bussing provided by the school district, they would still provide that. They wouldn't necessarily provide it at the front door of the apartments, they'd maybe provide it somewhere halfway, so the kids could walk, you know, less than a mile, and then get on a bus, and that would be figured out through the, through the review by the school district on where to put that bus stop.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Clem, and then Counselor Dickey.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Brian, the staff has no issue if council directs that there will be a pedestrian path to Clydesdale. That was the school district that raised concern about safety, but...
The county raised...
County, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, county did. But city staff had no problem with the connection to Clydesdale.
Well, we certainly would want to ensure that the city and the county are respecting each other's wishes there, and the county does control access to Clydesdale, and so we would, that question was asked during the planning commission proceedings as well, and, and staff's response was that it probably is not a good idea to approve something that, where we know that the county has made it very clear that they don't, they don't want to allow access across, across that, that strip.
For them to grant access, they would have to remove the barrier.
The barrier, yeah.
And if the barrier were there, kids would walk around it.
Well, that would be crossing...
Which is probably what they're doing right now.
...private property, or crossing a barrier where the school hasn't, and, and they could, they could erect some sort of, perhaps some sort of bound, boundary there, who knows? They've made it clear that they don't, they don't want that, that pedestrian connection.
Okay.
Counselor Dickey.
Thank you. I just want to clarify that they will not be issued an occupancy permit until this issue that we're discussing right now is resolved, is that correct?
Right, because they can't, under the conditions of approval, they can't get an occupancy permit until the final plat is approved for the partition. Or can't, you can't approve the final plat until the preliminary plat's approved, and that's what's before you tonight.
So if there are occupants already there, and they do not have an occupancy permit, what happens to the occupants?
Well, that'll be a code enforcement process. We would probably not go after the occupants, we would go after, and, and, no Brady Rogers is here tonight, he might want to go into more detail on this, but in talking with Brady, we would probably cite the owner, the property owner, and if we needed to, we could lean the property if it, if it came to that. And so, and the, our concern is, of course, just fulfilling the conditions of approval, and it is, it is mysterious to me that, that they're convinced that they have something from us giving them approval of the occupancy, so I really want to see what they've got.
All right, thanks. Counselor Nanki, and then I have a question.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Okay, so if we completed this action tonight by adding a condition back in, when is everything complete? Tonight? 30 days from today?
When the final plat is approved and recorded with the county.
And when would that be if we completed this?
Well, I can't, I can't tell you that for sure, because it's, it's a county process, you know, the county's involved in that too, but it would typically, it would typically take, you know, 30 to 60 days or so. I mean, I can't guarantee that, because it's not our process.
Okay.
My question is, I think, probably for Glenn Gross, do we know if all the other conditions that we had placed on this have been satisfied?
Yeah, yes, yes ma'am.
Everything else is done, this was the last thing on the list?
We believe this is the last issue, yes ma'am.
The last issue, okay. All right, are there other questions? Counselor Tesler.
Hi, I'm a little disconcerted that people are living there, and if you do find out that people are living there, what are you going to do? Are they going to be fined? Are they going to be told they have to leave?
Well...
What's the situation here?
Well, the situation will be between us and the property owner, and the, the, the property owner's been told that we think there's an issue here, to stop renting until we sort this out. So it'll be, it'll be a code enforcement issue that we'll take up with the property owner.
I'd like to hear back if there are indeed people living there.
Sure.
I'm thinking that's an egregious offense in this matter. I think it's pretty plain that people are not supposed to be living there until these conditions are met.
Right, right, we need, we really need to find out what they, they have.
Yes, we do. I, I will say that right now, we have no proof, and there's no accusation.
But we'll be happy to share that with you once we know.
Thank you, I would appreciate that.
All right, are there any further questions or comments from counselors for staff? All right, then I would entertain a motion. Counselor Nanki, this is in your ward, would you like to make a motion? Counselor Bennett, would you like to make the motion?
Madam Mayor, I move the staff recommendation.
Second.
Point of clarification, what do you, which staff recommendation are you referring to?
I'm referring to the one on my printed agenda.
You, if you're going to get to a vote at this point, you need to allow the applicant an opportunity for rebuttal.
Okay. Well, he may want to come up real quick.
All right, why, Counselor Claussen, did you have something to say?
No, I was moving towards getting the rebuttal first, so if we need to table that motion.
All right, Counselor Clem has...
I'll just withdraw, Madam Mayor, and I'll be ready to make it as we move forward, a motion as we move forward, or Counselor Nanki.
All right. Counselor Clem?
I move that we continue this public hearing to December 1st to receive more information for staff, and then allow the rebuttal as part of the normal process.
It's been moved by Counselor Clem and seconded by Counselor, was that Nanki?
Yeah.
Counselor Nanki, to hold the hearing open until December 1st to allow for further information coming from staff. Is there discussion on the motion? Counselor Clem, and then Counselor Claussen, and then Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, I, I just think there's a number of unanswered questions, and I'd like to know, I, I don't want to be at odds with the county, I certainly don't want misinformation about occupancy. I, I think, get everything on the table, let's make a, an informed decision.
Counselor Claussen?
Madam Mayor, may I follow Counselor Dickey?
Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I think that there's a, there tends to be a practice of, once one makes a decision, that everybody kind of drops it and does nothing, so it'd be nice to actually have a couple of weeks to talk with the county people, to talk with the school district people. I think the applicant has done a yeoman's job at, at trying to find a way across this, and is running into problems, which is why it ended up with the planning commission that way, so, much as I hate to, to slow it down, it may actually speed it up for the long run, if we, if we take a couple of weeks here.
Counselor Claussen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm concerned about how long this has gone for the applicant, to be totally honest, and it's kind of frustrating to me, I, you know, this is one where I would hope that we could get involved before it became a public process, so we could help to talk about different issues and things that we might be able to help clear as elected officials before it becomes a public hearing and things along those lines, but I'm concerned about waiting, I don't know that we're going to get a whole lot more information that's going to make a big difference one way or the other, to be completely honest. And in my opinion, we're talking about multifamily here, we limit the number of parking slots that go into multifamily, because there's a basic assumption that there will be some mass transit and some bike-ped access to multifamily properties, and I hate to see a big piece of multifamily go in and not have that other piece of access for these people to be able to have. So, kind of in my opinion, regardless of which direction that access goes, there needs to be a sidewalk there, whether it be a temporary sidewalk that waits till further development, or, you know, of a semi-permanent nature, I guess is deemed by staff, or it be a permanent access that goes whichever direction it needs to go, but I feel like it's kind of one of those things, we've got to have it. There's multiple options that are out there, many discussed tonight, and it's something that if this is passed, at some point, we might be able to lend our weight, or, you know, help have some discussions amongst some of the other jurisdictions to see if we can help something move forward. So, I'm going to vote in the negative to the motion, because I want to see staff recommendation moved through.
Okay. All right, let's see, were there any other counselors? Counselor Bennett?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I firmly agree with Counselor Claussen, I, it's not, there's no questions left on the table. The simple question is, will children have a pedestrian pathway or bicycle pathway to school? That's all this says. And how they choose to do it is a different, a kind of a separate issue. There, it's not impossible. They did not show an impossibility in their testimony. I thought the testimony was really good about the problems with a couple of them. They clearly hadn't examined one fairly straightforward option of just going straight to the school, and certainly the one that goes all around the neighborhood is not, there's nothing wrong with that option. I, I don't understand what the, what's left to find out about, whether people are living there or not is absolutely unrelated to this issue. And the only way to resolve that is, is get this thing over with, and I think Counselor Claussen summed it up really well, what we're, what our policy is, what was required under this plan, and that it's taken them this long to get to this point has nothing to do with us, or frankly, with the county, has to do with the way this was handled. And I think the only way we can really step in now is if we place this requirement that we already have on the books, and proceed to assist as much as us, as elected officials or our staff can. So I vote you, I suggest you vote against the motion.
Did someone else have their hand up? No, all right, we've, we've been sort of around and around the council several times with this. Okay, I, I share the, the same sentiments that Counselor Claussen and Counselor Bennett have just expressed. This, I well remember when this issue, when this property first came to council a year or so ago, when we were asked to change the zoning. And I well remember that this council thought long and hard about it, and we did support the idea to change the zoning, but certainly with the support also of the understanding of what was going to be provided for the people who live there, and for the, and I frankly was disappointed when I'd heard that it had gone back and asked, where they had gone back and asked the planning commission for relief, if you will, from that requirement, that really, really basic requirement. So I'm going to vote against the motion as well. Any further discussion? All right, Counselor Tesler.
Yes, I'm going to join you in voting against this as well. I do also remember when this was brought to us, and I support multifamily if it's well-done and well-planned, and, but there has to be access, there has to be public access, and there has to be pedestrian access, and it has to be safe, because, you know, I wouldn't let my child walk on the side of Corden Road, and I don't think anybody else should let their child walk on the side of Corden Road without a sidewalk. That's unacceptable for anybody, for anybody's child. And we need to adhere to those promises that we made, and Brian Colburn did a great job tonight in saying, we have to keep our promise to the public, which we made, and we have to do that, so I'm going to be voting against the motion as well.
All right, Counselor Dickey.
Yeah, I would echo all of those comments, and, and want to mention that I, I do remember when we discussed this a couple of years ago, and my, my only angst in approving this development was the access issue. I, it's, it's not close to transit, or very accessible to transit, and I know that's not what we're discussing tonight, but that was, that was my biggest angst about the whole thing, was just the accessibility, and especially to the school. So, we've had a number of schools in Salem that have had accessibility issues, they've been built, and I can tell you, there are a number of them that they kind of cross city-county jurisdictions, and we've got sidewalks that go part of the way there, kids are walking on a sidewalk, and then it stops, and then they're on a 35 mile per hour road with barely a little gravel easement thing that they have to walk on for the rest of the way. So this is a problem that we've had, this is our opportunity to address this from the beginning, rather than wait 10 or 20 years till, God forbid, a child gets hit by a car, or some other issues come up, or people drive their kids to school even though the school is very close, because they don't feel, you know, they don't want their kid walking along Corden Road or something, so this is something we definitely need to get resolved, and I say the sooner the better, and I think we have very capable staff that can continue to work with the applicant in helping them find a solution.
Counselor Clem?
Yes, and, and the reason for the motion is to Counselor Dickey's last point, let's find a solution here. A couple more weeks, if it's taken this long, isn't going to break, isn't going to break the whole thing, and I think the sense is, is that without making a decision, that, you know, that there has to be a connection, but I, I think the motion was just to get more information and answer the questions that counselors have brought up, and so to that degree, I think that's the reason for the motion. Two, three weeks from now, we can make a decision with all the information and still put safety of the children paramount, but we had so many questions, and it just seems odd that we're just going to rush into the vote, we haven't even heard rebuttal yet, so I, I, that's the reason for the motion. Let's get all the information out on the table, and then let, let us vote based on all the information. No one here is making the motion against the pedestrian connection, any, any inference that there is, is plain wrong. Bottom line is, let, let's see why the county and the city and the school district can't agree on how kids get to and from, where they live to school. And if it takes a couple more weeks, let's do it right.
Counselor Nanki.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, because if we let this thing go through tonight, it will be done, and staff has no obligation to do anything. Once we close this page, it's like, if I were the director of the department, and I know I have limited staff time, oh, you want to go out and talk to the school district or the county now? No, council already made their decision, it's a done deal. No, council already made their decision, it's a done deal. So we have an opportunity to kind of assist in the interim, and I for one, I'd prefer to have best-case scenario come out, rather than they've already gotten pounded into a couple of walls previously. So just trying to help.
Counselor Claussen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My issue is, I don't think in two weeks, we're going to come back and say, "You have to put the pathway this way," or "You're going to have to put the pathway that way." I think if we're going to say you need a pathway, just tell them now. Tell them that's what it's going to be. And that's okay. There's certainty there for everybody involved, and there's certainty, I guarantee you, from the questions we've asked tonight, that staff knows we're involved in this and we care about it. Issue I have with this is, no matter which way we decide, I'm not sure how long we're going to have to wait before we can talk to people about it, because of ex parte. Because we're going to have to wait for a final decision, I believe, to come back. So now, all of a sudden, we elected officials are tied on this, and we can't go do it. So...
Once we make a decision.
So... Could we at least table the motion until we get rebuttal? I just feel like we're a little premature.
Can you give rebuttal?
I would... So...
Are you making a motion?
I would move, if somebody would give me a second, to table it till we get rebuttal from the applicant.
No, it's that we didn't have an original motion yet.
Yeah, we did. Oh, he...
Yeah.
All right, so then Counselor Claussen, what you would do in this case is to make a substitute motion to allow for the continuance of the hearing until the 1st of December?
Actually, I believe what he's asking us is to defer consideration of the motion, continue the hearing, allow the applicant an opportunity for rebuttal, and then if someone wants to make a new motion at that point to continue the hearing, they can do that. So moved?
So, yes, so moved.
All right, is there a second? Okay, seconded by Counselor Rogers. Is there discussion on the motion? Shall we vote on the motion? All right. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. No? With one no vote, motion passes. All right, we'll continue the discussion and ask the... Ask Mr. Grins to come forward for rebuttal.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, well, clearly, I'm building a path. You know, I could have had this help a few months ago, and I'd have been... I do want to make sure that the record is clear on one thing, that my staff has assured me that we did approach the school district about the backdoor entrance almost a year ago, and we were told no. On the same basis of safety concerns, and their desire not to have multiple access points to a school site, that they don't have good control. But tonight, we heard from the school district that that was a possibility, so that's an option now that wasn't available to us before, that we can deal with. And it's a cross property that I've already gotten an access part of the way there, so I may be able to get the rest of it. Again, I want to be sure that council understands, we were not looking to get out from under an obligation, only to figure out the best way to achieve the safest transportation for the students from this project. So that's clear. And I only want to clarify, I have no idea about occupancy, but I... That's not part of what I do. My job here is to get the partitioning plat approved and to get the access done, so I don't know about that. So I would answer any questions you have. If you continue the hearing, I understand that. If there's a role that we're supposed to play during that continuation, please make sure I understand it. Because if I don't know that, I won't know what I'm supposed to be doing. It sounds like that your expectations, if that were to occur, is that staff would have some contact with the county, and maybe the school district should make sure that it's clear what their feelings are about some of the options that you've looked at. We cannot go back to the county, because we were pretty much told no. So we can't go back and do that. But I believe the staff could to overcome that issue. I do believe that I can provide a safe access that way, with lighting and stuff, but I was never given that opportunity to explore that with the county past the no. So that, to me, is still the best option, if we can do it. Because I have that easement in hand, I have the ability to do that, but...
All right, are there questions for Mr. Grins? I saw Counselor Claussen's hand up.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Grins. I do want to make the comment, I do feel like you and your staff did a good job of trying to pursue some of these other options, and I don't want that to go unnoticed, so thank you for doing that. If there's no other questions for Mr. Grins, I do have questions for staff.
Okay. Are there any other questions for Mr. Grins? Okay.
To your comment, Counselor Claussen, if the staff's response to your questions is new evidence, we need to give the applicant an opportunity to rebut that.
Okay. Stay at the podium, if you would.
All right.
I just want to ask the city attorney, how... Can you describe to me, because I do get confused on this, if we pass the motion tonight, what are our limitations for ex parte? If we continue the motion, what are our limitations for ex parte?
If I understand your question is, if you issue... If you vote on a decision tonight to either approve or deny the application, with or without the condition. It's not a final written decision for land use purposes until you get that written decision back in front of you, which wouldn't happen till December 1st. So until you actually adopt that written decision, the ex parte rules apply.
Okay. And then if we continue, then we're still in the midst of a public hearing.
And ex parte rules would still apply.
So we can't talk to it, no matter what, so we're tied.
Correct.
All right. Thank you.
Other questions, comments? Counselor Clem, thank you.
Thank you. For this city attorney, in terms of process, the... We could hold the public hearing open for information from staff only, in terms of testimony or evidence?
My concern at this point is that there's been a lot of facts talked about during questions to staff and during your deliberations, and typically, the applicant's got an opportunity to respond to those. You've given the applicant an opportunity to respond to those now. If you continue the hearing and only let staff speak, that's probably going to be a procedural violation. So you have a couple of options. If you wanted to keep going on this, you could close the hearing, keep the record open for a written staff report. If there's any new information in there, that's going to open up a can of procedural worms.
All right. Are there any other questions for Mr. Grins? All right, thank you, Mr. Grins. Okay, I can now close the hearing, and I would entertain a motion. Counselor Bennett?
Madam Mayor, I move the staff recommendation.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Tesler to move the staff recommendation. Is there discussion? Counselor Rogers?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, this thing seems pretty simple to me, it's just what we're going to do. But the question is, for me, is that the planning commission, we're amending their decision to allow them not to build a path, and a school bus would come in and help take care of it. To me, it's that simple. We're either going to build a path, or we're going to have a school bus come in. And I'm for building a path and not put that on the school district. This is a property decision, it's not the school's decision. And so we're making an exception here to require the school to do something that... I don't know that we have that authority, but this situation would cause that to happen. And I think our responsibility is to do what we talked about early, is that we have the... It's in the plan, we knew it was in the plan. The developer's willing to build it, he just wants to know what, and what's the best. And I think from our perspective, within our realm, is to build a path.
Counselor Nankie, and then Counselor Claussen?
Except that path is going to make it 1.39 miles for the kids to walk to school, so a bus is still going to pick them up, and nobody's going to use the path until something happens on the triangle, or just as it means to get out to Old McClay Road. Whereas, we heard from the applicant that he's at dead ends. We could have helped get rid of those dead ends and possibly open up a couple of pathways, if we'd waited a couple of weeks. Because the buses will still have to pick them up, because the pathway will make it too long of a route for them to get to school. So the kids are going to cross country and cut through anyway. You'll see human game trails. None of the kids will make that walk around, especially the time it takes to get on the bus is, they're going to be sitting around for a lot longer than if they just walked to school.
Counselor Claussen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I see Counselor Ninkie's points, and I'm in favor of putting in a path, regardless of where it goes, to be totally honest. And I don't think waiting is going to make a big difference on which way path is going to go. I'll tell you, I'm definitely not convinced a path directly to the school is a silver bullet. I'm not even convinced Clydesdale is a silver bullet, but I'm a little disappointed in the lack of coordination between the city and the county, and I'm not blaming city staff by any means, I don't feel that at all. But just in terms of, you know, the county saying, "Well, go talk to the city," and we just don't think that's right. But obviously, city staff feels like that's a reasonable opportunity, and why can't the county talk to us a little bit? Because that conversation has already happened, and it's a little bit frustrating to me that some of this can't happen short of city council stepping in and making something happen. And, you know, I think we do collaborate very well, and I'm a little disappointed that it didn't happen on this one, for whatever the reasons are. Again, I'm not convinced Clydesdale's a silver bullet either, because until you go walk it, sometimes it's really hard to tell. That said, it's multifamily, it's a lot of residents, it's not a lot of parking, there's buses that only run during the week for the schools, not during the summer, the kids still need to get from their apartment to somewhere. There has to be a path. I'm sorry, that's just how it goes in my book. So I'm voting in affirmative of staff recommendation.
All right, Counselor Benars?
I think it the same way. I'm very much in support of having a pathway. I don't think it's just the school days and school buses. I guess my wish, if I had a magic wand, would be to wait the two weeks to get the additional information, to be sure that it's acceptable to go down to the school on a pathway, to get the information. That, to me, is a pretty simple two-week wait, to get some basic information, and then make a decision on the 1st of December. But I agree with you, it needs a path. It needs a path one way or the other. I don't like the 1.39-mile path or area, because not all of it's going to be at a path, it's going to be on sidewalks and public streets, but it's still a long ways to get to school. Why not wait? I realize that's not the motion on the floor, but I'd say, why not wait? Why not get the information together, come back, and make a decision?
Counselor Clem, followed by Counselor Rogers.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I would have preferred to wait, too, and then we'd know better that we were making the best decision on behalf of the students. They're going to run to the school directly from the apartments. It doesn't matter what we do here, or whether we wait two weeks, but I think if we waited two weeks, we'd have a clear understanding of what we were actually voting on. Right now, of course, I think our sense is, everybody wants a path that's needed. Bottom line is, we don't know what we're approving. We're just saying staff recommendation for a path, and then letting the developer work. And a developer, given the other jurisdictions involved, hasn't been able to work it out. So I was hoping maybe if we had more information, we could figure it out, but the kids need a path.
Counselor Rogers?
Thank you, Mayor. Just rebuttal in the rebuttal here. I don't think we've eliminated by staff recommendation, we don't eliminate the developer from trying to get that conversation with the school to build a path. If we wait, we're just delaying the whole process, and he can go out, or they can go out and talk to the school if they want to, and that's because that's the only requirement that we're requiring. So they can go do that if they want to, or they can build a path out to McClay, or it's their decision, and we shouldn't be making that decision for them.
All right. Shall we call for the question? Thank you. All those in favor of the motions, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. Motion carries with Counselor Nankie voting no. Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to have a slight stretch recess, and then everyone stay tuned. We're going to resume our meeting, and we are at item five. And before we go to 5A, I'm going to actually ask Counselor Bennett if he would like to address the item that was pulled, 3.2A.
Yes, Madam Mayor. I move the city council adopt resolution number 2014-69, establishing new solid waste collection rates and charges, and rescinding resolution number 2012-5.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Clem to adopt resolution number 2014-69. Is there discussion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, if I may. First, I apologize to the folks who are here to hear this. When I pulled it, I had no idea what lay between here and there on getting this issue up, but we had a very complete presentation by city staff, as well as representatives of the waste collection industry in this area on rates and charges. These are the correct rates and charges. I really appreciate that the Mid Valley haulers took the time to follow up on questions we had regarding recycling providers. I felt very confident in the answers they gave, that they're really giving strong consideration to both theirs and the community's bottom line in a whole bunch of different ways. The employees, the investment the city has made in issues like this, and their own, I think, goodwill in this area. So I look forward to another four years of hearing from my... Or however many years it goes at a time, two years, that I hear regularly from my constituents, this is the best service the city offers in many cases. And always, they should know that, that this is a very popular service. It is done well. I never get complaints on this service. It is extremely well done. So I really appreciate it, and hopefully, these rates and charges will continue to compensate for the great work they do.
Great. All right. Further discussion on the motion? Counselor Nankie?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I agree wholeheartedly with Counselor Bennett's comments in regards to the service that's provided, and the rates. My issue has to do with the other charges, and the franchise fee, I don't think the timing of it's right, but the case was made that the actual rates for the hauling and disposal are appropriate, and hence, if we bifurcate it, I could vote for one and not the other, but it's going to be one motion sitting in front of us. So just to let people know where I stand on that prior to the vote, which will be in the negative in my case.
All right. Counselor Benars?
Got a little clarity here. So a couple of weeks ago, when we had the second reading of ordinance 2414, it had to do with the rate, raising the franchise rate from 5% to 7%. Tonight, we're talking about the actual rates that we'll be charging the subscribers, the people who will use... people who will use the service out there. It's completely a different, it's same issue, different facet of the whole thing. If we don't increase the rates, the franchise fee goes up and the haulers end up basically getting hit in the nose because they're going to have to come up with that 2% increase without. I was against, there was two of us that voted in the nay in reference to the franchise fee increase. And my logic that evening was, was because of its, I didn't want to see it just go into a bucket of money. It had, it was our ability to say, "I can increase the rate from 5% to 7%, but I don't really have to." Just because I have the ability to do so, I'm going to increase it. I didn't like it. Tonight, it's a separate issue. It's a different one. It has to do with, with whether passing that cost on is fair to the haulers. I've always said, all along, when I said, I voted in the nay the last time, the minority. I think the haulers deserve what they, what they, what they get. They have a right. They have a legal right to that. And so, therefore, I'm likely to vote in favor of the motion.
Thank you. Further discussion. All right, we have a, I have a motion on the floor. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay.
Nay.
Motion carries with Counselor Nanki voting no. Thank you very much. All right. Our next special order of business item is 5A. And that has to do with Salem Kaiser Community Development Corporation loan portfolio. And I believe we have a staff report?
Yes. Mr. Wells from Urban Development.
Yes.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name is John Wells, Director of Urban Development Department. And tonight, we've got a brief presentation on an information report that you have before you. You will recall that for the past two years, we have been working on the restructuring and the transfer of the portfolio for the Salem Kaiser Community Development Corporation. Although the council doesn't have to approve this, the city manager has the authority to approve loan modifications. We thought that because of the size of this portfolio and the complexity and the amount of time that we put in, it would be good just to give a brief overview of what it is. You heard from Mr. Seymour earlier tonight from Catholic Community Services. But just to quickly walk through, walk through the staff report with you. For those that are not familiar with the Salem Kaiser CDC, it's a nonprofit community housing development corporation with a mission of affordable housing and to provide affordable housing. Since 1999, for the past 16 years, they've been pursuing this mission. And the city has been an active partner, investing approximately $2.6 million in home and CDVG funds. Those are our federal entitlements that we get every year for the purpose of acquiring property. There were 14 that we've invested in and to also help with the rehab and the remodel of those. Over the past few years, Salem Kaiser CDC has sold three of the properties. And our investment and our loans have been reduced from 2.6 to about 1.5 million is where we are right now. The city's loan, the city has 11 loans that we're, we're talking about, I'm sorry, 11 properties that we're talking about. One property, we are in first lien position, which is the grant apartments in the, in the photograph there. But all 10 other properties, we are in a second lien position behind the bank, a bank or a primary lender. The 11 properties that are remaining encompass about 148 units. Nine of these properties are in Salem. Two of them are tax credit properties. They're doing very well, actually. Those two that really are performing. And the two properties are in Kaiser, Apple Blossom and the Chamawa property. Generally, these are smaller properties. They range in size from four units to, I think, a high of 31 units. The average is about 13 units. So, they're, they're smaller. They're, they're difficult. They're more costly to manage. And we know that for those that have been listening to the Housing Authority and our disposition of remote smaller properties, we know the higher cost. But about three or four, three years ago, we became concerned about the Salem Kaiser CDC was struggling to maintain not only their organization and operations, but also the viability of these properties. And so, we met with HUD and we hired the Housing Development Center out of Portland to assess our portfolio. We wanted a third, or their portfolio. We wanted a third-party look at, at how well the portfolio was doing. As being in second position, we are concerned about that. Gail Monahan from the, from HTC is here. She's the Director of Asset Management for HTC and is the one that did this audit for us. And what we found, we were, we weren't surprised, but we were concerned. The properties did show a high debt burden on them. They were, they were low operating reserves. There were some, some properties with high vacancies. There's high deferred maintenance over, we estimated about 2 million. Low organizational capacity within Salem Kaiser CDC. They only had a staff of one or maybe that time two to manage these portfolios. We knew that that was a concern. And, and HTC told us, we were probably going to need to do some restructuring of this portfolio and to make this, to make this succeed. About a month after the report, we met with, several times with Salem Kaiser CDC, and they determined that, given where they were as an organization, that they were not going to be able to continue. And they gave us notice that within, within a year or with the following year, they were going to disband. And that put it to last September, but they've now extended that until the end of this year to hold, to stay together as an organization. But we met, when we talked with them, we agreed that we really need to get these properties in the hands of an organization that can manage, that is qualified, that does have a performance history, and has the capacity and the financing to be a partner. And it's a tall order for affordable housing. And we had to do it, as I said, by the, by the end of this year. We went out for an RFP last spring. We had three, three proposals. Catholic Community Services Fund was the superior proposal, and we selected them to negotiate with. They were very appealing because we have worked with them. We have funded many of their projects. Have been very successful. I think you heard about some of that from Mr. Seymour tonight. But the reason the portfolio was particular, why their proposal was so appealing is they, they were, they were proposing to take all of the properties, not to split them up, but to take the whole portfolio. They were willing, they were coming with an investment of $1 million of their own money to help shore up the, the properties and to, to help turn them around into a performing, performing assets. They did know that the city, that they were, there was too much debt on several of these properties. And they were requesting that they sit down with the city and negotiate some relief from the debt that we have on our second, on our second position liens. And they also indicated that with, they're bringing $1 million into rehab the facilities, they were going to need some help going forward in the future from our entitlement, particularly our 15, 16 entitlement that we're going to be getting from HUD this coming year, to help shore up their, their portfolio. So, we said, that's, we can talk. That looks, that looks like something we could work with you with in a, in a workout program for the portfolio. But we said, there's going to be some requirements we want to see also. We want to see an asset management plan. We want to make sure that there's a strategy for every one of these projects, properties individually, not just the portfolio as a whole. We wanted a capacity building plan. We wanted to make sure that they had the resources and could get access to resources that we could actually manage the size of the portfolio over the long term. We wanted to make sure that any, any agreement that we had with them in modifying any loans, that there would be a priority given to capital reserves, getting reserves, not just in a pool, but for every single property. And we wanted to see more private investment. It was clear that we were reaching our thresholds as to what we were allowed to put into these properties from HUD. They have limits of what we could, we could invest. We also know that our HUD funding is, has been declining. And we wanted to see, over the long term, an entity that has resources of their own to, to take care of properties to it. And meaning that it wasn't just going to be a competitive process with the city every year. And they agreed to that. So, what we had, when we went into discussions with them, we had several options. We had the option of loan forgiveness. We have an option of loan restructuring. We had the option to reduce the interest rates and to leverage their investment with future allocations of our entitlement dollars as well, or some combination of the above. And we've, we've actually come up with a strategy that uses all of these. So, when we think of those 11 properties, two of the tax credit properties, probably their loans total about $750,000 out of that $1.5 million. About half of them are these two tax credit. They're doing really well. They're performing. We're not recommending any change to those, and they agree. But there are two properties that are going to need to have their loans forgiven. And then there are seven that we're recommending that have some modification to the actual agreements. So, looking at the two that we're looking to modify, I'm sorry, to forgive, is Apple Blossom in the Maryland Street project. We have loans from Apple Blossom remaining of home loans, about $177,000 and about $83,000. It's about $260,000 out of that $1.5 that we think, we're, we know needs to be forgiven. These are two properties that are projected to operate below the break-even point. In fact, right now, they don't have enough revenue to really cover their, their loan. They're not in good condition. They, they have a lot of maintenance work. And we're, we're recognizing that if these are going to succeed, we'll need to forgive those. So, about $260,000 out of the $1.5 million we're recommending would be forgiven. Now, the cash from giving up our, our interest in this, we're requiring that any, any proceed, any benefit goes to the properties. They need to be building those capital reserves. And that we also want to make it clear that, and they understand too, and they need this. But we want it to be spelled out, that they've got a asset management fee of at least $250. It will be $250 per unit, which is really the, the, the standard for, for them to pay themselves to operate their portfolio. So, in every one of these modifications, we want to make sure that there's an expectation that they will be taking a asset management fee. And we'll be, we'll be monitoring this on an annual basis. So, the seven properties, that left seven, two that we're not touching, the tax credit properties, these two, the other two that we were going to forgive, these seven properties had all different levels of, of success, we thought, and, and failure. And we thought that our motivation, of course, was we wanted them to succeed. They want to succeed. That we would waive our, our loan payments for the first five years. And then in year six, we would take a, they would take 85% of the cash loan. We would, they would start paying us 15. Now, the slides, no, the slide's written correctly. And that would last for up to 30 years or before, or till the time that they have paid them off, if that comes sooner. Now, the reason it's 30 years sounds like a long time, this is about, all seven of these properties, equates to about $450,000. We're saying, we'd like, we want you to succeed. We want you to take the first five years and take, not pay us, we're not forgiving the loan, we're just deferring it. And that you will start paying us in, in year six. So, we want you to get on your feet and start producing. Now, 30 years is a long time. It's highly likely that these properties will be refinanced. At that point, we could be paid off. Or that if the property is sold and another one is bought, we would be paid off. Or we would have the option, if this property is no longer in what HUD calls its affordability period, the exposure to the city, we would have the choice at some point in the future to forgive that if, if, if we wanted. But this gives everybody flexibility. It gives them the opportunity for success. It keeps our loans on the books for a period of time. And depending on what the, the situation is on, on each one of these properties, we have some flexibility and some, some, some choices. So, it seemed fair. They've agreed to that. And again, the asset management fee, we want to make sure that they are earning, that the properties are structured in a way that they can actually pay themselves to run these, this portfolio. So, the last item, what has to do with the deferred maintenance, I remember, if you remember, I mentioned at the beginning that there's a lot of maintenance that needs to be put in to this property. Now, they were coming with $1 million. And about $643,000 of it would come from the foundation to go to targeted properties that, that need that investment. And that the very last page of your staff report, it explains which properties that money would go to. We have really drilled this right down so that there is a plan on each, on each unit, on each property. So, we know where the, the money will flow. $356,000, they're going to be paying, to pay off liens on Renaissance Place. That is a property you may or not recall, had burned a few years ago, has been, has been rebuilt. It's a wonderful, actually, there's a picture of it, a wonderful facility now, but there's a construction lien. So, they are going to be paying those construction liens off so that they can take the property and move forward. Now, they have asked the city for a set aside in this next, this next funding cycle, which will start, it's already, actually already, the applications are already out, for our 15, 16 CDVG and home funds. The problem is that HUD, as I mentioned, has limits on what we can put in. We've already put in a certain amount of money. And HUD has, would have to waive those limits in order for us to do this type of investment. We have been working with HUD for over two years on this. They are very pleased that this portfolio is being collaboratively saved and, and life expectancy on this portfolio is extended. But more importantly, the population, it serves almost 300 individuals in 148 units. We're in, are some of our most critically fragile population. Are, we're working to keep housing for them. HUD is putting together, and they're in the process right now of giving us a waiver and giving, so that we can, as of next year, if we choose, if the council chooses in the budget, to put $663,000 into these properties, that we'll be able to do that. We don't have the waiver yet, but they wanted to see the whole deal before they gave. And they're, they're in the process of, of issuing that. So, we're very optimistic. So, with that, it's a substantial investment that will come right away to put these properties into, into a condition that can take them forward and that can keep that population served. I should mention that it will be, the set aside is like what the, the council did for the Housing Authority for three years consecutively in trying to build a pot of CDVG money for three years to put into the Parkway Village property. It's, it's the same concept, but they want to do this in one year and try, and try to get those investments going quickly. So, next steps. We are ready, we are looking to close by the end of the year. We've been, we're ready to, our next step would be to execute our loan modification documents with Catholic Community Services. Salem Kaiser CDC and have scheduled their closing, I mentioned, for the end of the year. But then, we will, once the property is transferred, we will be monitoring these every year, to looking at the performance and, and making sure that it's, they're meeting the objectives that are laid out in their agreement, that the reserves are there, that the asset management is in place in the organization, and we'll go forward. So, we're actually quite relieved after two years with a lot of help from Housing Development Center. Extremely complicated transaction to sort through. There are a lot of other issues besides ours with the HUD, with HUD and with state funding that we're doing these properties and requirements. We think we have a structure here that can work. And we think we can go forward with, and we think we've protected the city as far as any, any, any restrictions that would be placed on us as a result of this. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there questions for Mr. Wells?
Counselor Clausen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't have questions. I just wanted to commend staff for pulling this together and really stepping up and making the deal happen and keeping these housing units consistently in affordable housing. Because it's, I mean, that's part of what we're here for. And it's part of what all the, well, it's what the HUD funds are for. And I'm glad that we're able to keep that going. So, good job, staff. Thank you for doing that. And thank you for making it happen.
Mr. Wells, you might have, you may have said, how many individuals are living in all of these properties?
Well, there are 148 units. We think there's about 310 low-income individuals living in this. It's, it's an important part of this community's affordability. It's an important part of this community's affordable housing portfolio, and it was running into some hard times, and I think with the help of bringing in some expertise, having a very cooperative relationship with HUD, Salem Kaiser CDC, we're very motivated to make this work, and we, of course, were as well.
I'm very, very pleased with this, because it shows a great opportunity that the city, the public sector, was able to really help to meet the needs of people who truly are in need, and good, safe housing is such a basic foundation for quality of life, absolutely. Job well done. I think I saw a hand over here, Councilor Benars.
So, I think you answered the first part of my question, there's 148 units that we're dealing with at this point, with these seven plus two plus two, is that right, four? 14, 15 different pieces of property, basically.
I'm sorry, I can't under, I couldn't understand the question.
There isn't a question so far, it's a statement. No, my concern has been, and always was, that we're making sure that we're doing the right thing with the money that's going towards these units, that we're not spending over what the market would have spent in the first place on trying to house people, and sometimes some of the funds that we get are, you can only use for certain things, you wouldn't be able to do the same thing that the private sector would do, dollar for dollar, building for building, and that makes it a very difficult thing. I just, I get the assurance from you that we are doing the right thing with those dollars, because we can't do anything else with them, we're obligated to put them towards certain low-income housing, which the private sector may not have done.
That's correct.
So when people, on the outside, when people look into this and say, you're spending how many dollars, or you're giving away X number of dollars, keep that in mind, that there's only certain things that we can do with those dollars in the first place that the private sector could not.
And there are restrictions on what these dollars can be used for, and as I mentioned earlier, there's a, there is a strategy and a plan for each property, and we're looking at it at a property level, not as a portfolio, just at a portfolio.
Thank you.
Good point, thank you.
I want to take a moment to recognize Gail Monahan, whom I believe is sitting right here. Would you stand up so people know who you are? You have worked very, very hard to bring this about, and I just want to commend you for the care and the time and the hard work that you've put into this, this is so crucially important for our community. Thank you.
Yay!
Yay, well done, well done. All right, were there any other questions or comments for Mr. Wales? Thank you, wonderful report, wonderful. Okay, we're going to move on, we have no unfinished business, I just draw your attention, information reports in your packet, and I believe on one of them, 7B, that our city manager has a few notations for us.
Well, actually, BJ Toey, our wonderful library administrator, has been here all evening to come and give you some additional information about this.
Welcome, I saw you sitting there.
I saw you too. Good evening, I'm BJ Toey, Salem Public Library Administrator. The information report is to request to close the library December 8th through 10th. CCRLS, the Shemekic Cooperative Regional Library Service, is getting a new library system, a computer system, and it's during those three days that we will have no system in place, neither the old system nor the new system will be available to use to check materials out or check materials in. We will be saving all of the books that come in to check in on December 11th, which is the day when our brand-new system, which is called Symphony, will come up. And I just wanted people to know that Symphony is going to be a more accurate and easier-to-use library system than we have right now. It's going to have a confederated search, which means that when you put in a keyword or a title, your search is not only going to bring up the books that match that term that you put in, it'll bring up everything, it'll bring up databases that match your search, it'll bring up eBooks that match your search, audiobooks, and if you want to check out an eBook, you're not going to have to leave the website anymore and go to the eBook provider, you're going to be able to check it out right in the spot. You're going to have the ability to text message yourself, if you're looking for a list of books, you can send it to your smartphone and then take your phone into the stacks and look for those things, right there, you'll have the catalog access. It'll be more efficient for staff, because we'll be able to download the whole circulation system onto a tablet, we can take it out to an outreach event, we can check to see if somebody has a card, and if not, give them a card on the spot, or take the tablet into the stacks and look for all of the books that are in hold, right there with a list of them right on our tablet. So it's really going to make our work easier and I think make people's access to this easier. But for those three days, when we don't have access to either system, we think that it'll be better service for the public to not be open.
Okay, all right. And I understand that the West Salem branch also will not be open any of the time it would be during those, just those three days?
Correct. It would close West Salem on Monday and Tuesday, it would close the main library on Tuesday and Wednesday.
All right, okay, are there questions? Councilor Tesler.
You can have a new application too for this, or, because I have the application.
For the mobile phone?
Yeah.
Yes, there will be, we're going to a different provider, but you can use the old one until the new one comes up.
Okay, and then we'll get some kind of notification?
You will get notification, we'll be putting information out in handouts, we'll be putting it out on Facebook, we'll be distributing it with the newsletter, all the different ways we can, and we have people's emails who have opted in for information, they'll get it by email.
Okay, great.
It's called Book Mine, the new one.
Perfect. And Ms. Toey, the first floor, or the lower-level floor, will remain open so people can use computers?
Correct, we'll keep the Technology Center open so that people who need to come in and do job applications or resumes will be able to use the Technology Center on Tuesday and Wednesday.
Great, wonderful, all right, thank you so much. We're always excited when something new happens at the library, this sounds like a great project.
Thanks.
Thanks for bringing us the news.
And speaking of something new happening at the library, I toured the children's area about a week ago, and it's coming along beautifully, so we'll have an opening soon.
We're waiting for, of course, the final work to be done by the construction company, but it's completely carpeted, it's completely painted, it's looking amazing, so I can't wait to offer tours to all of you when we're ready to open up.
Wonderful. Thanks so much. Okay, it's now time for ordinances, and I would ask the city recorder to introduce the first reading, Ordinance 8.1A. Oh, wait a moment, I think there's something to be said.
Hard to see it now.
Yes, I'm sorry, Councilor Tesler. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, just one small point, I am picky about this, but you gave me an extra S in the agenda, my name only has one S in it, and I'm always saying that because I was harassed by year, for years, by a nameless government agency, and my name only has one S.
All right.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
All right, okay, now, we're on to the ordinance. Excuse me, first reading, 8.1A.
Ordinance Bill Number 12-14 relating to property maintenance, amending Salem Revised Code Sections 50.025, 50.035, 50.255, 50.260, 50.510, 50.520, 50.525, 50.545, 50.550, 50.605, 50.610, 50.620, 50.630, 50.640, 50.645, 50.710, 50.800, 50.805, 50.810, 50.880, 50.905.
Thank you. All right, Councilor Bennett, do you have a motion?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, would you, Councilor Rogers, I think, is ready to go along.
Councilor Rogers is going to make a motion.
Save us an extra step.
All right.
Well, I'll move for the staff recommendation to start out with.
All right, it's been moved by Councilor Rogers and seconded by Councilor Tesler to move staff recommendation, Councilor Nanki, your hand is up.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I need to recuse on this item as I own chickens.
Yes, you do, all right. Councilor Benars?
So, I was not aware that we'd have to accuse, because it's not a...
It's fiscal, it's taking away license and fee requirements on chicken holders.
So I'll defer to the city attorney at this moment, I'm not sure. By the way, I too have chickens.
All right.
I ate chicken the other day.
The wheels are turning up there, so I'm just waiting.
I would tend to agree with Councilor Nanki, there's a potential conflict of interest there, so you, I think it's a personal ethics issue, so you have to make your own decision on that.
So I will recuse myself from this issue.
Okay. Councilor Rogers?
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes.
This is funny, I remember several years ago when this topic came up, and it only took us about a year to work through it, and so when I read the ordinance this time, I was really, I started out, I was really frustrated because we put so much work into planning it, and of course, I thought it was ridiculous to have the code in the first place, so here we are, and I'm back, but, so I guess what I'd like, what I'd like to have staff do is give us why they want to remove the application process, I get that we still have the requirements in there, and we have a penalty that we're going to have, but I just don't understand why we want to go without the application, and how do people understand then what the requirements are, if we don't have a process for them.
Good evening, councilors, Madam Mayor, my name is Brady Rogers, I'm the administrator of the Neighborhood Enhancement Division for the city. There are a number of reasons I've suggested the elimination of the coop licensing and inspection. Primary is the fact that we lose money doing it. The fee is set at $50, $12.50 of that is a processing fee at the pack counter, $2.50 goes to automation fees for the computers at the pack counter, leaving $35 for one of my staff to do about an hour's work, including drive time, to get out there, conduct the inspection, and come back and take care of the administrative tasks. Also, there's an opportunity cost, when I've got 60 times a year, we do about 60 licenses a year, I've got staff out doing these inspections when they could each and every time be responding to another call for service of some different type, somewhere else in the city. So those are the main reasons why I would like to, I can go on, but I'm sure you have other questions.
Yeah, that number, you have 60 new ones per year?
On average, about 60 license applications each year.
So how many license do we have out there today?
Somewhat more than 240, between 240, 256, I think, was the final tally.
Sounds like we're going to be taken over by chickens. So it's just, it's a dollar cost, and I guess, I can't, I guess I can't argue that, trying to argue how, somebody wants to have chickens, and how are they going to find out if we don't have a process, what the conditions are?
Well, actually, we're talking today and theorizing a resource guide, that'll have all the rules for chickens and chicken keeping that the city has, in a small pamphlet form, available on the internet, can be downloaded, have paper copies available, and we would likewise disseminate the information any way we could, through community connections or neighborhood meetings, our own Facebook pages, things like that.
Can I keep going, Mayor?
You certainly may.
So if we have a neighbor complain about their neighbor's chickens, we have a penalty in here, first offense 250 and then 507.50. What happens with the first time you walk out there? Are you going to slap $250 on them, or are you going to talk?
No, a penalty's never our first reaction, it would be education to begin with, depending on the results of that contact, if we could get voluntary compliance, only then would the penalty phase come into effect, only if, you know, there was no other way.
Okay, now, there's also a group that, it seems, when we did this, there was a group supporting the chicken movement, and they were providing education as well, is that still going on?
Yeah, they're still active, in fact, I was in contact with Barbara Palmero and the Chickens in the Yard, she helped with some of this ordinance, and they are still active, and I'm sure she would likewise disseminate the information.
I think my only issue is the application, so I don't know where I'm going, I'll let you guys see what you think.
All right, other questions? Councilor Bennett?
Is it, we had a gentleman testify earlier about five or six, which is it in your version this time?
That's five chickens, it's that we haven't changed any of the standards for the original license, well, the licenses had evolved, other than, for humane reasons, a square footage figure that was in consultation with the Chickens in the Yard.
If we wanted to change any of this, how, what will be our process for doing that?
At this point, staff is not recommending you conduct a public hearing on this, so the next step, if you go to first reading, is to go to second reading, if you have changes you'd like to the ordinance, now would be the time. If you want additional changes after tonight, you always have the opportunity to make engrossments before second reading, and we can delay second reading to get those engrossments in place.
Do I have to amend the motion, or what do I have to do?
Yes.
Well, I'd offer an amendment to raise the number of chickens to six.
All right, it's, there's a motion on the floor.
I'm thinking about those hen pecked chickens, I know, that was a tough one, I read that letter this morning about 5:00 AM, and I found it moving, so, I'm in, for six.
All right, so there's a motion on the floor to amend the ordinance to allow for six, to allow six chickens instead of five, motion was made by Councilor Bennett and seconded by Councilor Tesler. Is there any further discussion about being hen pecked?
Mary, if I can just add one thing, I just wanted to remind council, I think we started with three chickens, is that right? And then increased it to five, and if you have six chickens, or four chickens, or eight chickens, or nine chickens, if one dies, you're always going to want to get two more, according to that testimony, so, yeah, it's the same math issue.
It was a moving, moving letter this morning, and I'm into six, so, I can see the math problem, but the human problem is more compelling right now.
There's a motion on the floor, Councilor Rogers.
I don't think I'll support that, but we can go to four. And the other thing is, if we don't have a process here, other than a neighborhood complaint, we're not going to control it anyway, they're going to have six or 10, and we're not, we probably won't control any of it unless we have a complaint.
Councilor Clem.
For staff, what, could we retain the application process so that we could still stay in a position to inform people, and not, if we're losing money, what's the difference in terms of just not charging anything, or only charging the $15 for the...
I believe we could continue the application process, Mr. Rogers, do you want to say anything about that?
Well, it becomes a little tricky, the pack counter is run with funds that are paid for through the licensing, so it wouldn't be a free license, they would still have to pay the processing fee and the automation fees to get a free license, but we could do that, but then again, where somebody's expending the time to follow, you know, to enter this information into the system, the Amanda system, I suppose it can all be at the pack counter, and hopefully, the $15 would expend, would cover the time and effort that they put into it.
I think Glenn Gross has a comment, Mr. Gross?
Yes, if I may, I'd just like to add that I think the point is that the fee that we're charging isn't coming close to covering the cost to administer the program, we've had four years of experience with this... We've had four years of experience with this program and based upon our administrative experience, as well as the input we're getting from our code enforcement officers who are actually out there in the field, dealing with the chicken owners and, and, you know, observing what's really going on out there, we've just come to the conclusion that it's, as a matter of efficiency and as, as a way of allowing our officers to focus on higher priority issues, it's time to try something different. And just, I don't know if it'll give you some confidence, but this isn't the only time that we have a, a set of regulations that aren't tied to a permit or a license. For example, home occupations, where somebody can open up a business in their home in a, in a single-family residential zone, they can do it as a home occupation. There are rules, standards and so forth in the code, but there's no permit required. They just do it. And oftentimes, most of the times, they'll call and say, hey, I'm thinking about opening up an accounting office in my home, you know, what do I have to do? What are the rules? And we, we have prepared a resource guide, as Brady was talking about, we could even pull it up and show it to you if you want, for home occupations and they can see right there, you know, all the requirements and so forth. It's worked. And I don't think, I can't recall very many code issues, code enforcement issues we've had with home occupations. And you know what? Of the 245 licenses that we've issued, 99% have been without any issues. We haven't, you know, we haven't denied more than 1% or 2%. It's a very small percentage of problems, so we just don't think this is a, a big deal.
I guess I would just like to make a point, though, on the other side, and that is that although this discussion came before I was on council, that I know there were a lot of people in the community who were concerned about their neighbors having chickens and relied upon this body to establish some rules and regulations and that they looked forward to the city being a manager, if you will, of the system.
Right.
And I wonder if we do away with the licensing and the inspections except by request, complaint, if we're being a little disingenuine to the public to whom we said, all right, you don't want them, but we'll, we'll allow them, but with these parameters. Has anybody thought about that?
Well-
And maybe I'm, tell me if I'm, you know, kind of barking up the wrong tree.
Well, again, based upon our experience over the past four years, it just, it really hasn't risen to that kind of a problem. Very few, very few cases in that four-year span have, you know, have resulted in a, a bad chicken coop situation. The rules will still be there. We'll still enforce them. It's just that we won't be spending precious resources on something that we don't think is, is needed.
Okay. Thank you.
Real briefly, I'm sorry, we're getting close to the 10 o'clock hour. Could we have a motion?
I move, we extend by 15 minutes.
All right. It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Clausen to extend by 15 minutes. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Thank you. Motion carries. Okay. Someone else had their hand up. Counselor Clem?
Yes, and I remember the, the chicken wars. The, I, I think the attitude that at least some of us had on council was, you know, if this works, we'll, we'll get rid of the fee and then we'll just get rid of the, the licensing, the permit. And so if staff says 99% of it worked good, then, then we did a good job and we did what folks expected us to do, but to continue to, to belabor staff for 1%, I, I think we, we met that expectation the public had.
Okay. All right. I'm satisfied. Counselor Tesler?
Yeah, I, that was also my understanding too, when we passed that. And, you know, to be frank with you, I'd rather have, you know, compliance people out and board to take care of serious issues and not worrying about chickens. I mean, I, I really think we can, we can handle this. I mean, it was an experiment. We lost money on it. I, I mean, I long for the old school days when people just took a pen and a piece of paper and filled out something and handed it to somebody and it was totally free and everything was good, but nothing is like that anymore. But, you know, we just don't have the money to do this.
Yeah.
And, you know, I just respectfully, we disagree with you, but I would just rather have them spending their time on more serious issues.
Yeah. No, I wasn't going to, to vote against this. I was just raising the question of how the public might feel. Okay. Anything else?
So the motion on the floor, if you recall, is to raise the number of chickens to six?
Yes.
All right. The motion on the floor made by Counselor Bennett and seconded by-
Counselor Tesler.
By Counselor Tesler. Thank you. To increase the number from five to six. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Nay. How many nays, please? Okay. Voting no, our counselors Rogers, Clausen and Mayor Peterson. Motion carries. Thank you. All right. We have-
We still need to proceed to first reading.
We still need to proceed with the ordinance, right? Okay. So Counselor Bennett, do you have a motion regarding the ordinance?
I amended Roger's motion, so he has, he has the motion.
Oh, that's right. You have the motion. Do you have another motion?
No, I'm willing to move forward, so.
So Counselor Rogers' motion was amended by Counselor Bennett's motion, so now you just vote on the main motion.
Right. Okay. So the main motion made by Counselor Rogers and seconded by, if any of us can remember.
Clem.
Counselor Clem will take it. All right. Thank you. And that was to move the staff recommendation. Thank you. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Would the recorder please introduce the second ordinance, 8.1B?
Ordinance Bill 27-14 relating to creating a new chapter, the Salem Revised Code, Chapter 45, Smoking and Declaring an Effective Date.
All right. Counselor Bennett, do you have a motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I move the staff recommendation.
Thank you. It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Benares to move the staff recommendation. Is there discussion?
Yes. This would just allow us to have a public hearing on December 1st on this issue relating to smoking on sidewalks and landscapes, drips within the public street right-of-way adjacent to institutions that have declared themselves non-smoking.
Fine. All right. Yes, Counselor Benares?
Can I ask for clarity, because I know the last time this, I realize what this says here, but the last time we met, I believe Counselor Dickey included all-
Different, different motion.
Different motion.
This motion is, is exactly what it says. It's to that simple, yeah.
Thank you. I just want clarity.
You bet. You bet. I know what you're saying.
Okay. All those, is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries with the exception of-
Counselor Nanki.
Counselor Nanki, voting no. All right. Thank you. The next, do we have somebody here? Yes. Ryan McGinty is here to speak on the public comment. Welcome.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. My name is Ryan McGinty and I am in Ward Four. And I have a list of proposed street trees that I would like to see approved by the council. And I, and I checked, they're all, I went on the, the nursery website and most of the trees in there are, a lot of the nurseries, blue herring, especially big trees, the exception for maybe one tree. All the other trees are, they do have them as two caliber. And I have been in contact with Mr. Jan Yuswowski.
Thank you.
And he, I just talked to him this morning and he, I told him that I was going to be speaking tonight and he, he kind of mentioned that he liked some of the trees himself and thought it would be a good idea. The pistachio tree, the Chinese pistachio tree, that would be a good tree for underneath power lines because it's a shorter tree and it doesn't go up above power lines. And it's a flowering tree as well. But I have, I have some other ones in there. So, any questions?
Are there any questions? Yes. Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for coming down, Ryan. It's nice to actually meet you.
Sure. My pleasure. Thank you.
We can tell from your emails, you're very passionate about trees. And I'm assuming staff will actually look at these and see what we have in our code currently and what we can expand to that, especially if you've been talking to our urban forester as well.
Yes. I actually met with him. Went down and had Rudy O'Ranch burgers. My uncle, my uncle owns Rudy O'Ranch Beef Burgers, so.
Excellent. Well, thanks for your front-end work on that.
Oh, and I had, I had another, I don't know if you already have one of these, but where I used to live, over in Pennsylvania, okay, I, I see that you have a sign over there that says Tree City, USA. Is there any sign at the entrance of Salem that says Tree City, USA, approved by Arborday Foundation?
Like the All-American City signs?
I don't know. Here's our Public Works Director right beside you, Peter Fernandez.
No, we do not.
We do not. All right. Okay. I think Counselor Clausen had his hand up.
Yes, I do, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Ryan. Have you done research on these? The thing that always worries me about our street trees is the damage they cause to sidewalks as we're seeing all over the city, because it seems like we had some trees that were not the best to go next to sidewalks that did go next to sidewalks for many years.
Yes, I have. Most of the trees are, trees currently where I used to live, that they had approved and they, they had a problem with the streets buckling. And now they're going in and they're revising everything and the new, their new approved street trees are on that list. And a lot of them, Mr. Jan Yuswowski, he thought that a lot of the trees that I had mentioned to him would be great street trees.
Okay. Great.
Thank you. And thank you again for coming down and waiting through that long meeting for this.
Yeah.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Chick-fil-A.
Okay. All right. The last item for our meeting this evening is a mayor's item and that is to announce the appointments that are, have been made to the Airport Advisory Commission, Historic Landmarks Commission, the Human Rights and Relations Advisory Commission, Public Art Commission and the Senior Center Advisory Commission. Those reports are in your binder. I draw your attention to the resumes for the individuals because I remember at a recent meeting, council did ask to have more information about the individuals. So just, I'm not going to read their resumes in the order in which they're in your binder, but I do want to go on record as saying how much we appreciate individuals who do put their names forward and it's really a pleasure to appoint to the Airport Advisory Commission, Neil Eldon White, to the Historic Landmarks Commission, Ian Johnson, Cara Kaser, and to the Human Rights and Relations Advisory Commission, Jonathan Castro Monroy, Hope McGee, Scott McDonald, Catherine Sermeyer, Gilbert Yo and Roseanne O'Connor, and to the Public Art Commission, reappointing Rick York, to the Senior Center Advisory Commission, Ron Rubel, who is reappointed. So read their resumes, resumes, when you run into them in various places, thank them for their service. There is no further business to come before this body. We are adjourned.
For a picture.